Today is Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. The time is 7:16 PM. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Management of Emeryville Services Authority. This meetings and the meetings that will follow this meeting this evening are being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act authorized by Assembly Bill 361. During the Governor's declared state of emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic, the City Council and the other public agencies, commissions, and committees operating in the city of Emeryville may make findings not less than every 30 days that the Governor's state of emergency still exists, and that it's in the best health, the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of our public and our staff and the members of this board to continue meeting via video or teleconference during that time. We'll make those findings not less than every 30 days. It's important to note that the Governor's declared state of emergency does end on February 28th. We do intend to have our next public meetings in person. We had hoped to do that today, but there were some technical issues that needed to be sorted out, so we apologize for that. But we will be coming back in person and authorizing and having hybrid meetings going forward, so the public can participate remotely if desired. With those announcements out of the way, members of the public who are joining us by Zoom can use the raise hand feature at the public comment time to give comment. If you're joining us by phone, you may press star nine, or you may submit an electronic speaker card in advance to the city clerk at the link provided for on the website under Council Agendas. This time, I'll ask if the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Mora.
Here.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Present, here.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Here.
And Mayor Bowders.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
I second.
Thank you. A motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Member Mora to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Thank you. The agenda is approved. Members, are there ex parte communications for the Mesa Board Meeting? Seeing and hearing none. Item five is public comment for items not on this agenda. A member of the public who wishes to comment for an item not on the agenda in the Mesa Board Meeting will get one minute to do so. Please recognize Brian Donahue for one minute, please.
Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Okay, I am the editor of the Emeryville Tattler. It's an online news source, and I'm also a constituent of Vice Mayor Courtney Welsh. And a few weeks ago, she said the following in her email and then her Twitter account. Several people have reached out to me concerning an article of several lies about myself and my council colleagues being circulated in political spaces, and that would be the Emeryville Tattler. Today, we're going to play a game called Fuckboy Fact Check. And real quick to address those. Well, she, if she did fact check me, she didn't, the Vice Mayor didn't, you know, tell me about that. But the thing I'm, the reason why I'm bringing this to your concern, especially the new city manager, is that we have a Vice Mayor referring to a member of the press who's trying to hold her to account, and her constituent also as a fuckboy. So, you know, some might call that impolitic. I don't think it's impolitic. I think Councilmember Welch is smarter than that.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the agenda in the Mesa Board Meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to action items. Action item 6.1 is a resolution of the Board of Directors making the required findings for AB 361. Is there any public comment on the AB 361 resolution? Public comment for one minute. We'll recognize Brian Donahue, please. Good evening, welcome back.
Yes, I don't think that Vice Mayor Welch is dumb. So, impolitic is not the proper term to describe her calling me a fuckboy, because I don't think she is impolitic. I think it shows us how she's wound. She's, she's at her inner nature, she's undemocratic. We should not have this person on our city council, yet the people voted for her, but at the minimum, the mayor, John Bowders, should not have elevated this person to Vice Mayor status and then moving on to mayor status presumably in the future. This person is not, can't be, is not a public servant. She doesn't know the meaning of the term "public servant." She's going to stop people from speaking. She's, look at the comment "fuckboy" to her constituents and to the press. She is, she does not know how to wrap her head around the idea that she is a public servant. We, shame on the Vice Mayor for elevating her to the mayor.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on item 6.1? Okay, seeing no further public comment, is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion? I move approval of resolution on item 3.6.1.
Aye, second.
Thank you. A motion by Mayor Bowders, seconded by Vice Mayor Welch to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. The resolution is approved. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:22 PM, and I have adjourned this meeting. The time is 7:22 PM. I'd like to call to order the City of Emeryville as the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. As was previously noted at the prior meeting, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act authorized by Assembly Bill 361. Members of the public may make comment using the raise hand feature on Zoom, or the star nine if they're joining by phone. Please note, Madam Clerk, that all four members of the board are still present. At this time, Agenda Item 3 is approval of this agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve this agenda, please.
I move approval of the agenda.
I second.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Vice Mayor Welch and seconded by Member Mora to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. Ex parte communications, members, are there any to report? Seeing none, we'll move to public comment for the consent agenda and items that are not on the agenda. A member of the public who wishes to comment for an item on the consent agenda or not on the regular agenda for the redevelopment agency will have one minute to comment. Please recognize Brian Donahue. Good evening.
Okay, continuing on with my evidence that Vice Mayor Courtney Welsh is not fit to be Vice Mayor, certainly not her mayor. She said, stated on her Twitter account, quote, "A member of the public, not me, outside of Emeryville, called her a corporate-backed Democrat, spoke the truth about her, a journalist." She got really angry about that and said this, "From here on out, if you want to say I'm connected to, with, or involved in anything, cite your sources or shut the fuck up, and that's on everything." That's a direct quote from the Vice Mayor. To, okay, to the five of you, or the four of you, and especially to Vice Mayor Welch. No, for me personally, no. I'm not going to shut the fuck up, and I am going to continue to hold you, Councilwoman Welsh, Vice Mayor Welsh, and the rest of you to account. So, I'm not going to be bullied. This is an attempt to bully me, and, and, like I said, I don't think you're being impolitic, Councilwoman Welsh. I think you are just showing us that you are not a public servant. You don't have a public servant's heart.
Thank you so much for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the agenda or the consent agenda within the scope of the redevelopment agency? Okay, seeing none, we have a consent item calendar for items 6.1 through 6.3. Members, members, are there any items that you wish to pull for discussion or ask questions about? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar for the redevelopment agency.
I move consent calendar.
I second.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Vice Mayor Welch. It has been seconded by Councilmember Mora to approve this consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. We have one action item, members. Item 7.1 is the AB 361 findings. This time, members of the public who wish to comment on item 7.1 will have one minute to give comment. Please recognize Brian Donahue for one minute, please. Good evening.
Okay, I call on Mayor John Bowders to withdraw your elevation of Councilwoman Courtney Welsh to Vice Mayor, or at least to make an announcement that you will not support her as mayor, because she's clearly not fit for public office. She belongs in the private sector where she can tell people to go fuck themselves and call them fuckboy and all that kind of things that she likes to do. But that's not appropriate for a politician to have that kind of a heart. And I don't care that she's using profanity, that's fine, but that she showed us who she is by these comments, and she's not fit for public office. She should not be a public servant. She belongs in the private sector where she can probably make millions of dollars. She'd probably be happier over there. So, I hereby call on Mayor Bowders to not elevate this person to mayoral, the mayoral hood. She will abuse her office as mayor. She will stop, she'll, mark my words, she will stop free speech.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public who wish to comment for item 7.1? Seeing none. Item 7.1 is a resolution, members, is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion? I'll move item 7.1's resolution.
Aye, second.
Thank you. A motion by Mayor Bowders and a second by Vice Mayor Welch to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. Ex parte communications, members, are there any to report? Seeing none, we'll move to public comment for the consent agenda and items that are not on the agenda. A member of the public who wishes to comment for an item on the consent agenda or not on the regular agenda for the redevelopment agency will have one minute to comment. Please recognize Brian Donahue. Good evening.
Okay, continuing on with my evidence that Vice Mayor Courtney Welsh is not fit to be Vice Mayor, certainly not her mayor. She said, stated on her Twitter account, quote, "A member of the public, not me, outside of Emeryville, called her a corporate-backed Democrat, spoke the truth about her, a journalist." She got really angry about that and said this, "From here on out, if you want to say I'm connected to, with, or involved in anything, cite your sources or shut the fuck up, and that's on everything." That's a direct quote from the Vice Mayor. To, okay, to the five of you, or the four of you, and especially to Vice Mayor Welch. No, for me personally, no. I'm not going to shut the fuck up, and I am going to continue to hold you, Councilwoman Welsh, Vice Mayor Welsh, and the rest of you to account. So, I'm not going to be bullied. This is an attempt to bully me, and, and, like I said, I don't think you're being impolitic, Councilwoman Welsh. I think you are just showing us that you are not a public servant. You don't have a public servant's heart.
Thank you so much for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the agenda or the consent agenda within the scope of the redevelopment agency? Okay, seeing none, we have a consent item calendar for items 6.1 through 6.3. Members, members, are there any items that you wish to pull for discussion or ask questions about? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar for the redevelopment agency.
I move consent calendar.
I second.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Vice Mayor Welch. It has been seconded by Councilmember Mora to approve this consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. We have one action item, members. Item 7.1 is the AB 361 findings. This time, members of the public who wish to comment on item 7.1 will have one minute to give comment. Please recognize Brian Donahue for one minute, please. Good evening.
Okay, I call on Mayor John Bowders to withdraw your elevation of Councilwoman Courtney Welsh to Vice Mayor, or at least to make an announcement that you will not support her as mayor, because she's clearly not fit for public office. She belongs in the private sector where she can tell people to go fuck themselves and call them fuckboy and all that kind of things that she likes to do. But that's not appropriate for a politician to have that kind of a heart. And I don't care that she's using profanity, that's fine, but that she showed us who she is by these comments, and she's not fit for public office. She should not be a public servant. She belongs in the private sector where she can probably make millions of dollars. She'd probably be happier over there. So, I hereby call on Mayor Bowders to not elevate this person to mayoral, the mayoral hood. She will abuse her office as mayor. She will stop, she'll, mark my words, she will stop free speech.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public who wish to comment for item 7.1? Seeing none. Item 7.1 is a resolution, members, is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion? I'll move item 7.1's resolution.
Aye, second.
Thank you. A motion by Mayor Bowders and a second by Vice Mayor Welch to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. Members, the resolution is approved. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:27 PM, and I have adjourned the redevelopment agency meeting. Okay, we are now at the city council meeting. The time, Madam Clerk, is 7:27 PM. I would like to call to order this meeting of the city council of the city of Emeryville. As was noted earlier this evening, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act authorized by Assembly Bill 361. And members of the public who wish to make comment can use the raise hand feature on Zoom. They may press star nine on their telephone, or they may submit an electronic speaker card online to the city clerk through the city's website at the Council Agendas page. Please note, Madam Clerk, actually, I'll let you call the roll for this meeting. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Mora.
Here.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Present, here.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Present.
And Mayor Bowders.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda, but I would like to note at the outset of this meeting for the members of the public that item 11.1 on tonight's agenda, which is a public hearing related to a request for a noise ordinance waiver by the Union Pacific Railroad, that item is being continued. We will take public comment only. There will be no presentation or public hearing. It is agendoned, so we will get public comment, but it has been moved to the February 21st meeting due to a noticing issue. We had hoped to have this meeting in person today. We had some technology issues, and so we will have that meeting in person at the next meeting, and we will be moving that public hearing with proper noticing to that time. So, with that understanding, I'll just ask, is there any further amendments to the agenda for tonight's meeting? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Can I accept that as a second to my motion?
Yes, oh, sorry, yeah.
That's okay. Motion by Mayor Bowders, seconded by Vice Mayor Welch to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. Now, we're at special orders of the day, and, members, it would be remiss of us to not recognize that we are in Black History Month, and this is a very important month of the year. It's, also should not be limited to a month of the year. Black History Month is something that should be a daily celebration in our community. And the city of Emeryville in 2018 began a tradition of hanging the Pan-African flag at City Hall in recognition of the African diaspora and the African people and the black community here in Emeryville and the East Bay. In 2022, we passed a continuing resolution that recognizes Black History Month every year without requiring council approval or action, and it also orders the flag to be hung from February 1st through the last day of February each and every year, and we have been doing that. What I wanted to simply do in recognition of that moment tonight is very briefly reread our resolution and proclamation in recognition of Black History Month and invite brief remarks from the members of the council if they are interested. So, Resolution 22-10 from this past year, which is our continuing resolution, is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville recognizing the significance of Black History Month and directing the Pan-African flag be flown at City Hall each year for the month of February. Whereas the month of February is officially celebrated as Black History Month, where we set aside a special period of time to recognize the heritage and achievement of Black Americans, and whereas the United Negro Improvement Association adopted the Pan-African flag as the universal symbol of Black liberation on August 13th, 1920. And whereas the red in the flag stands for the blood shed by Africans in their fight for liberation, the black in the flag stands for the people of the African race, and the green stands for the fertility, productivity, and the beauty of the African continent. And whereas in recognition of the significance of Black History Month, the city of Emeryville first raised the Pan-African flag at City Hall in February of 2018. And whereas the city wishes to continue recognizing the achievements and the contributions made by Black Americans by recognizing and raising the Pan-African flag each year for the month of February, it's now been therefore resolved that the city council and the city of Emeryville hereby recognizes and honors February as Black History Month, and further resolve that the city council directs and continues to direct that the Pan-African flag be flown at City Hall in accordance with the United States Flag Code for the entire month of February of every year. I just wanted to recognize the fact that this is a great city that has two Black Americans on its city council, and it's a privilege for us to have a diverse community and a diverse council. And the reality is that there's a lot of important perspectives on Black history and Black liberation, and there's a lot of challenges facing Black Americans today. Tyree Nichols lost his life at the hands of law enforcement officers several weeks ago in Memphis, Tennessee, and we are living in a constant state of needing to advocate and elevate the voices that are going to help bring us to a more just community and society. And so, while raising the flag is a statement of our values, it's also important for us to elevate and raise the voices that bring us to a place of greater equity and equality in our communities. And so, with that, I would like to just ask if members of the council wish to self-select into giving very brief remarks about their perspective on Black History Month today. I'll begin by Vice Mayor Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge, Black history is American history, and there are obviously very famous Black Americans that we celebrate and learn about very often, but there are so many names, even within our local community, that do not get the recognition that they should, and that I invite and encourage people to, especially as Californians, look into Black California history, so they can learn about just the dedication that Black Americans have had in the state of California. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other members who wish to give brief remarks? Member Pryforce?
Thank you, Mayor, for your, for your comments, and thank you, Councilmember Welsh, for your comments. I, you know, as someone who identifies as Black, especially from Haiti and Dominican Republic, and in the history of the Haitian Revolution, that it's very important that Emeryville is reflective in our policies and, and how we recognize our, those of us who, who exist in America through marginalization and other oppressive vehicles that have, that are of assistance to some of the most draconic legal and financial systems that, that we struggle against. I definitely want to acknowledge the council members and the mayor who helped to institute it in 2018 in terms of the Pan-African flag being raised and Black History Month being recognized. I also want to recognize the, the efforts of those in 2022 who, who are, who continued that tradition, and so I want to give kudos to them. I also want to recognize an incredible press conference that Councilmember Fife and many others in Oakland had that focused on the attacks that, that, that Black political leaders are receiving, particularly is disproportionate as it relates to, to Black women. And so, so something that acknowledges that, and I, and I want to be very clear that criticisms are very different from violent communication, and being able to identify violent communication. And I would want any, and I will let anyone know that any violent communication that's being hurled at Councilmember Welsh, any council member in the future, or, or just really anyone in Emeryville, that, that I, I protest it, and, and I will always speak against it, and I think a, yeah, I would, I would definitely recommend that we look into what Oakland has, has done and has proclaimed in support of Black women in politics as a part of, I think, Black history, if we can create that precedent as, as well. And I also want to acknowledge Black male political leaders, and also those who are trans, that's really important, who, who are just being attacked, and I was, and so I want to, so I want to recognize, I want to recognize that. And my last recognition is for Kwanzaa, Three Kings Day, Lunar New Year, and several holidays that, that are symbolic of our diverse population of workers, residents, and students in Emeryville be recognized, and I know that in my communications with, with, with the Madam Clerk, that that is currently being looked at, and so, and that, and I also want to encourage that. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Member Pryforce. Member Mora?
Yes, I'll just say briefly, I concur with my colleagues, and I support continuing the resolution and flying the Pan-African flag in recognition of Black history, and also overcoming the challenges that remain as we strive for racial equality, both in our, in our city and our country. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, would you like to say anything about Black History Month?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Just want to appreciate being in a city led by the four of you with such thoughtfulness and attention towards equity and, and care. That's a really important value for a city to have. It's embodied by its leaders, which is, which is you all, and I'm happy to be a part of this team and support the values that you've all espoused. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Mr. Kennedy, I'd offer the same to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, my only comment would be that as a member of the LGBT community, we really stood on the shoulders of the civil rights movement from the 1960s onward, and we just owe a tremendous debt of gratitude. It was not an easy fight, and it still continues, but I just want to pay homage to that, because that was a very difficult time in this nation's history.
Thank you. I would, I would really resonate with the last comment in particular, as somebody who was once unhoused, and my first professional career was, occupation was offered to me by a Black woman, and I worked in the court of the U.S. Virgin Islands for the only female justice of that court, and she still calls me 15 to 20 years later, every week, to every month, to check in on me. I have a deep appreciation for the work that came ahead and how that has, the hard-fought issues that have come from women and people of color have benefited many other marginalized voices. As I think Member Pryforce aptly said, we have all benefited from the shoulders that we stand on. So, thank you so much for that, and we will move to Agenda Item 5, which is announcements on commission and committee vacancies. Do we have any to announce tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing new to announce, but at the January 17th meeting, I did note that a new recruitment will open on February 17th. So, a week from this Friday, we'll have a new recruitment for all of the vacant advisory body seats.
Thank you so much. Item 6, members, is council member, special announcements on reports of meetings in attendance. Are there any meetings in attendance that you represented the city at that you wish to report? No, okay. I don't have any to report this evening. We will move to Item 7, which is the city manager's report. Mr. Budenholz.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item 8 is ex parte communications. Members, please look at the agenda, and if you have an ex parte communication to report or announce for an item on the agenda, now is the time to do that. I will give you a moment to just confirm that you have made those notes, and I will start with the Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, do you have any ex parte communications you wish to report?
No, Mr. Mayor, I do not.
Okay, Member Mora?
None.
Okay, Member Pryforce?
None.
Okay, and I have none to report either. There are no ex parte communications this evening. Item 9 is public comment for the consent calendar and items not on the agenda, and for this item, we will have two minutes of public comment. So, I'd like to first recognize Brian Donahue, please, for two minutes for non-agenda public comment. Good evening.
Why did you lower the time from three minutes to two minutes? I can see no reason to do that, other than you don't like free speech. Additionally, you said you're going to allow the public to speak about Black History Month. You didn't give us a time slot to do that, so I'll just say this. You're talking about elevating the voices of Black people to the mayor, but you didn't, you know, you didn't follow through with that with regard to the endorsement you made for, or the lack of an endorsement for Councilmember Kalima Pryforce, for Alameda County Democratic Party delegate for the 18th district. I'm sorry, somebody's calling me. So, you, I noticed you did not elevate the voice of our Black city council member Kalima Pryforce by saying no to endorsing his run for the 18th Assembly District for the Alameda County Party, Democratic Party delegate.
Items 10.1 through 10.6 are before the council for approval. Members, are there any members here who wish to pull an item or discuss an item? I just have, I just have one, one request. I would just, on item 10.5, Member Pryforce, you have your standby officer listed. You have one person listed. I was just wondering if it would be possible if we could approve this person tonight, but also ask for you to provide two others. The government code has, allows the governing body to select people. If you don't, and I would much prefer that you nominate people than put it up for us to select people for you. So if there's unfortunately some sort of a disaster and you became incapacitated, this provision of the code exists to ensure that there's a list of people available. And as a former disaster relief director, who has spent a lot of time following what's happened in Turkey and Syria lately, and the gravity of that experience, recognizing where we are in the Bay Area, I just want to help make sure that our city is completely prepared and that our council members are all, are all chipping into what we need to do to make sure our city is ready in the case of a disaster. Is that something that we could ask you to do for a future meeting?
Uh, yes, and I, I had a conversation with the city manager today. And, yeah, and I'll be submitting the, all the names at the end of this meeting.
Okay, great. I appreciate you doing that. Thank you so much. Are there any other members who wish to have comments or talk about items on the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I move.
I second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Member Mora to approve all items on Section 10. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye, thank you. Those are approved. Item 11.1, as was noted at the outset of this meeting, was supposed to be a public hearing regarding a resolution to grant a waiver from a noise ordinance for Union Pacific. That is to be re-noticed and it will be heard as a public hearing on February 21st. However, it is listed on the agenda and it was not pulled from the agenda before the timeline to publish. The agenda expired. So it is available for public comment. There will be no staff presentation today. There is no public hearing today. No action will be taken today by the city council. There will be no discussion on the item. However, a member of the public wishes to comment on this item, regardless of that, we'll have one minute to do so. We will have a full public hearing at the next meeting. Please recognize Brian Donahue for one minute of public comment.
To Vice Mayor Courtney Welsh. The, the term fuckboy is an anti-gay epithet. You called me a fuckboy publicly on your Twitter account. What did you mean by that? And you can interrupt my, my time and I'll just give you the rest of my time to respond. What did you mean when you used the anti-gay, the homophobic epithet fuckboy to describe me? What did you mean by that, Vice Mayor Welch?
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on Item 11.1? Okay, seeing none. Members, there's no action to be taken on this item tonight. It will be continued to February 21st. Okay, we'll move on to Item 12.1, which is the reassessment of the Bay Street, Shellmount Street Extension Assessment District. There will be a very brief oral presentation from our interim Director of Finance, Bill Zanoni. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor Bowders, councilmembers. I am Bill Zanoni, interim finance director. The item before you this evening for consideration is a request for authorization to close out several fully-paid assessment district funds. Staff has been working with the city attorney and bond counsel regarding these next steps. The Emeryville Municipal Code was amended in 1993 with the addition of Article Two to Chapter Two of Title III, which established the Bay-Shellmount Contingent Assessment Special Fund. And then the purpose of that fund was for depositing special assessments that were collected. The Emeryville Public Financing Authority in June of 1999 issued $14.4 million in revenue bonds to refinance previously issued assessment district financings for the West Emeryville Assessment District, East Bay Bridge Assessment District, and the Bay-Shellmount Street Extension Assessment District. These bonds have all now been paid in full. With the outstanding bonds now paid, it is recommended that the remaining balance in the bond redemption, bond reserve, and contingent assessment funds, which total approximately $1.07 million, be transferred to a capital improvement account or capital improvement fund to be used to fund improvements or maintenance of improvements within the areas for which the 1990 bonds, 1999 bonds were issued. In addition, action needs to be taken to direct Alameda County to release the recorded property liens on the parcels within these assessment districts. And finally, the section in the municipal code referencing the Bay-Shellmount Contingent Assessment Special Fund should be removed. So in summary, the following city council actions are recommended. First, it's requested that the council adopt a resolution directing staff to record an addendum to notices of reassessment, basically to clear the property liens on the properties in the districts, direct the disposition of surplus funds to a capital improvement fund, and then introduce and waive first reading of an ordinance repealing Article Two of Chapter Two of Title III of the Emeryville Municipal Code.
Thank you so much for that excellently summarized report, Mr. Zanoni. Are there any clarifying questions for Mr. Zanoni about the presentation? Okay, now is the time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on Item 12.1 have two minutes to comment. Did we receive any written comment cards, April, for this item?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
I would just like to ask the mayor, you're, the amount of time you're delegating to us, the people, to speak on these items, these public comment items, seems to be capricious. Usually, we're allowed three minutes at the main, you know, you know, at the main public comment for items not on the agenda. This, tonight, you've reduced that to two. This item, you, you allocated two. Other, other items, you allocated one. What is your thinking? Why, you know, what, how do you, how are you determining how much time you're allowing us, the people, to, you know, to redress our, our government employees on, on these items? What, what's the thinking here? Because I can't make Iden or Herod. The fact that you're not speaking right now, like, when I was clearly finished, I put myself on mute, is like, I think is kind of hostile. So if you want to go down this route, Mr. Bowders, I'll just, you do this every single public speaking moment. Just have silence. Is that what you want? So be it.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on Item 12.1? Okay, seeing none. Members, we have two items before us under the item. As was mentioned, the first is a resolution of the city council directing the rec, the recordation of the addendums and the notices for the reassessment for certain assessment districts and directing the disposition of the surplus funds related to the city's assessment district. Members, is there any discussion on this item? If not, is there a motion on this item?
I will move to adopt a resolution and introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance.
We can, we can take one, one moment, please. We can only take one item at a time. So you can take 12.1.1 if you'd like, and we have to do a different process for the second one. So is your motion to approve 12.1, one?
Yes.
Okay.
And I second.
Okay, thank you. A motion has been made by Councilmember Mora, seconded by Vice Mayor Welch, to approve the resolution in 12.1.1. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye, thank you. That motion is approved. The resolution is adopted. So as a matter of instruction on, on items that are ordinances, we have to have a separate motion first to read by title only to authorize the city attorney to not read the entire ordinance to us. The law requires that. If we make a motion to let him read the title, he'll read that little paragraph and we'll not have to send him cough drops and canteens of water for the next three days. And then after that is approved, if we agree to do it by title only, then we can take an action on the item. So I would be happy to make a motion to read this ordinance by its title only.
I second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mayor Bowder, seconded by Councilmember Mora, to read by title only. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville repealing Article Two of, Chapter Two of Title III, Bay Shellman, Bay Shellmount Contingent Assessment Special Fund of the Emeryville Municipal Code.
Okay, thank you. The title having been read, I will now entertain a motion on first reading of the ordinance.
I move approval of the first reading of the ordinance.
I second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Councilmember Mora to approve the first reading of this ordinance. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Thank you, members. That ordinance is approved at first reading. It will come back on consent at the next meeting. Item 12.2 is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville authorizing the city manager to execute an event hosting agreement with WES Management for the eScooter Championship Event to be held in Emeryville in 2023, '24, and '25. And I will turn it over to Chad Smalley for a brief oral presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Bowders and members of the city council. This is Chad Smalley, Deputy Director of Community Development, here to discuss with you the event hosting agreement that has been negotiated with WES, also known as ESC, for the eScooter Championship Event to take place in Emeryville. And I'll give April a moment to bring up the slide deck. Thank you, April. Go ahead to the next slide, please. So I'll be brief, providing an overview of effectively what's in the staff report. But we'll start with some background about how we got to here and then I'll describe the highlights of the proposed agreement and conclude with staff's recommendation and next steps. Next slide, please. So by way of background, ESC and the eScooter Championship. This, the eScooter Championship is the world's first electric scooter racing series. It's, it's first season was last year in 2022. They held races in London, Switzerland, and France. And these are typically cited in urban areas on tracks that are about a half to a third of mile in length. Thirty teams compete against each other on these electric scooters that run up to nearly 60 miles an hour. In October, as a result of conversations that Mayor Bowders had, had had with some of the principals of ESC, the, the city council requested a future agenda item to discuss the potential for an event, the first North America event of ESC in Emeryville. And on November 1st of last year, the city council authorized the execution of a letter of intent between the city and ESC to negotiate an event hosting agreement and appointed an ad hoc subcommittee to work with staff towards planning the Emeryville event. Next slide, please. So the proposed agreement that's been negotiated with a tremendous amount of help from the city attorney's office is a license to host an eScooter Championship Series race in Emeryville in 2023, 2024, and 2025. For 2023, we would plan it to take place in September or October. And the future dates would be determined after the close of the first year in 2023. The exact location of the race would be determined 60 days from the effective date of the agreement, which is the last date, the date of the last signature on the agreement. Event elements, which are a high-level overview of the vision of the event and the kinds of ancillary activities that are planned, would be established within 60 days of the effective date. And an event plan, which is a much more detailed document that talks about different logistics related to the event, would be agreed to by the parties four months prior to the event date. As part of the planning efforts that are encompassed by the agreement include a detailed course plan, as well as a safety plan for spectators and participants. Next slide, please. I'll now go through the city's obligations under the agreement and the city's benefits, and then likewise ESC's obligations and benefits. So for city obligations, the city is obligated by the agreement to provide access to locations and venues that the city controls, primarily streets where the, where the race course would be cited. And we are obligated by the agreement to provide those locations and access to those locations without fees. The city is also required to cooperate with ESC in establishing an ambush marketing zone, which effectively is an area proximate to the track during the event times where unauthorized vending and advertising would be prohibited. We would cooperate with ESC on trademark enforcement related to the event. We would cooperate on scheduling other events, effectively not scheduling major other events that conflict with the proposed eScooter Championship Race, unless get, we get prior approval from ESC. We would obtain preapproval for any ancillary events that the city may choose to produce in conjunction with the race. And the city is obligated to solicit sponsorships to defray the cost of producing the race. Next slide. The benefits the city receives for performing those obligations include recognition and acknowledgement on an international stage as the event is promoted across the world. The city gets some special access rights and tickets to, you know, driver, or riders' meet and greet VIP areas and the like. We get video and photo content of the race for our own use and our own promotions. The city can elect to charge for and receive the revenue from parking and concessions at the event. And then the city receives 50% of local sponsorship revenues that are received by ESC that are in excess of the event budget or the actual cost to, to conduct the event. And I'll go into that a little more later when I outline the financial arrangements in this agreement. And then finally, the city benefit by local spending, by the folks that produce the race, ESC's staff and the teams, as well as attendees, spectators that come to the event, stay in our hotels, eat in our restaurants, and shop in our retail outlets. Next slide, please. For ESC, the obligations are to deliver the event requirements, which is an exhibit to the agreement. And that's effectively all the items required to produce the race. And it's a fairly detailed list, includes, you know, the, the barriers, the, the logistics, sanitary facilities, and all of those associated items. The city, per the agreement, may choose to deliver certain of those requirements if it's agreed to by ESC and it's cost-effective to do so. ESC is also obligated to produce the credentials for all of their staff and participants. They operate the race itself, of course. They cover the costs of food and the travel for their staff and the shipping of their equipment required to produce the race. They'll provide a display scooter, one of the, the race-type scooters for the city's promotional use around the city. And ESC is obligated to use its reasonable best efforts to source locally for things to source locally for things that it procures in connection with producing the race. Next slide, please. The benefits to E S C are all the event revenues that are not specifically allocated to the city, which I outlined earlier under city benefits. E S C retains all of the media rights related to the race. Um, and E S C would benefit by the introduction to sponsors by the city, and I'll outline this a little bit more in the next slide, please. So the financial arrangement. The total costs, um, at a very preliminary and rough level at this point for, to produce this race are approximately one point five million dollars. Now that budget, um, is in part dependent on the precise location of where the race is and what kinds of spaces are needed, uh, in order to produce the race. So the event budget is going to be refined, and that refinement in, takes place in conjunction with the location decisions, and that happens thirty days from the location selection milestone. The city, as I mentioned, is obligated to solicit local event sponsors to cover these costs. The sponsors that sign up and contract with E S C uh, receive various benefits as being sponsors, including their, you know, their name gets displayed in various locations. They get, um, a lot of media act, uh, uh, views. Um, they're part of the social media marketing that is done for the race. Um, and there's, uh, there's some benefits in terms of, of special ticketing as well for them. So, uh, with the city, um, soliciting the local event sponsors to cover the costs, there is a threshold of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in local sponsor commitments that would need to be obtained within sixty days. And then the full one point five, or whatever the refined event budget is, one hundred and twenty days from the effective date. These two thresholds um, are a point at which the city may either, if the, the amounts have not been raised by those, uh, those timelines, to either commit the necessary funding to get to those thresholds or cancel the event. Um, what this does is allows it, if there's, if there's lacking sponsor interest in, in supporting this kind of event, this gives the opportunity to, uh, to pull back, basically. The city's payment, if it does choose to commit, is due after the close of the event and after a true-up. This would be the case, um, and this, what this does is accommodates in the event the city was close to one of these thresholds and elected to commit some funds, and then later additional local sponsorships were secured. Those sponsorships would supplant the city's commitment, and the city would only play, pay the difference between the two. In the event sponsor revenues exceed the event budget, those revenues are split fifty-fifty between city and E S C, uh, again, subsequent to the true-up after the event. In addition to local event sponsors, it is possible for the city to facilitate the introduction of sponsors, um, to E S C that want to sponsor the entire series or some other event that's not in Emeryville, that's produced results in a contract, the city would receive ten percent of that contract amount as a commission, and those, uh, revenues would be attributed to the event budget as well. Next slide, please. The agreement requires insurance. Um, it requires E S C to obtain, uh, insurance with limits that are specified on various lines of insurance by the agreement. Uh, there's a requirement that E S C pro, uh, produce a quote to add the city to its policy for those, those same lines of insurance um, as an additional insured within ten days from the effective date, and the amount to do so, um, is not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. That amount becomes part of the event budget and, um, and is procured on behalf of the city. The certificates of insurance that evidence that the insurance has been secured are required to be produced within a hundred and twenty days of the effective date of the agreement. And finally, default provisions include three scenarios. One is a material breach, which would be a breach of the agreement that is, uh, does or is expected to result in a loss greater than a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, insolvent fee, any of, which are bankruptcy-related events where, um, either party is unable to perform its obligations because it's insolvent. Under either of those scenarios, uh, a default event is triggered and a notice and cure period is triggered. And if the breach remains unresolved, the parties, uh, repay the other party's actual expenses incurred up to a cap of a hundred thousand dollars if the breach occurs over three months from the event, and up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars if the breach occurs within three months of it, re, reflecting the fact that more costs are incurred, uh, the closer the event comes to, um, fruition. Finally, there's another, uh, termination event defined as the failure to raise sponsorships. I outlined that earlier. That's the seven hundred and fifty and one point five million dollar thresholds at sixty and one hundred days respectively. But also, um, to provide insurance on the timelines that are on this slide. Under either of those, uh, termination event scenarios, each party only covers, is only liable for its own costs that it incurred. Next slide, please. So summarize. This agreement, um, is produced, uh, subsequent to the city's, uh, uh, City Council's approval of the letter of intent to negotiate, uh, this event agreement. It really is a partnership model. Um, as you noticed, I made reference to a lot of plans and things that happen in the future. That's reflective of the fact that we will be working hand in glove with E S C to make this happen, um, as best we can. And, uh, hopefully for a great, to, to great success. We've negotiated in such a way with the, uh, the sponsorship revenue, uh, thresholds that it minimizes the city's financial obligations, um, upfront and allows us to test the market, so to speak, for support, and this is a unique opportunity for the city, and so it is a unique agreement in that sense. Um, we don't get many opportunities to host international events. Um, we don't get many opportunities to host things that are nascent, um, is, has the potential to be, um, a big deal and something that is, uh, celebrated all around the world. There's a lot of policy support for micromobility and sustainability and equity, which are all values that E S C embodies in their organization. Um, and, uh, the, the, this kind of event can benefit locals by bringing people to town on a weekend they otherwise wouldn't be. It also raises the city's profile on an international stage, as I mentioned. Um, so, in conclusion, the staff recommends the City Council, um, adopt a resolution that approves this agreement, and then uh, the real work starts. Uh, we would start to establish the event elements, uh, and the dates and location, those foundational pieces that inform the budget, and at the same time, work towards securing the local event sponsors required, uh, in order to produce the event. And with that, uh, I conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me, but we also have some, uh, our guests here from E S C, Khalil Bashir and Richard Norton, I believe, are on the line. They're actually in town. Uh, we're visiting, uh, this week to see the city and scout out potential locations. So, uh, if you have questions for them, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer those as well.
Thank you so much, Chad. I know, uh, I see Richard is here. Richard, did you have anything that you would just like to say on your own or add, um, to the presentation before we take questions and comments and discussion? You're on mute, Richard. There you go.
Yeah, sure. Thanks. Um, no, I think I'd just like to say that, you know, we've really enjoyed getting to know, um, who we've spoken to within the city so far, and we're really excited about the potential of the event, um, and, you know, working closely with the city to showcase all of the goals and objectives that we've discussed so far, um, really looking to support everything, transport and sustainability-wise within the city and everything that you're already doing. So, yeah, no, happy to answer any questions.
Hey, are there any questions for, uh, Chad Smalley or Richard Norton about the proposed agreement that's before us, before we go to public comment? You have clarifying questions or just questions you'd like to ask? No? Oh, Vice Mayor Welch.
Hi, Richard. I wanted to know if you could state in your own words what actually attracted you to Emeryville.
Yeah, sure. Um, it was actually, um, an initial conversation with Mayor John, um, of, you know, we've been looking to partner with cities that share our mission around, um, providing opportunities to all people when it comes to sport, but also the messaging around micromobility and sustainability to be able to, you know, work with such a progressive city like Emeryville, to be able to communicate the message that we want to, um, and to be able to work with the city where we think we can have a real impact, um, and work on legacy. So that's why we're really looking to have the three-year partnership so that we can come back to Emeryville year after year and, and show the impact that we hope to have, to help when it comes to education and helping, um, children and young people on how to use kick scooters and electric scooters in a safe way. Um, we just see it as a really great opportunity, and, you know, North America is a key region for us that we'll be entering this year. And I think having, you know, the support of the city and the mayor, um, and the City Council to communicate all of that is a really great opportunity for us with our support.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on this item have two minutes to give comment. Did we receive any written comment in advance of tonight's meeting, April?
No, we did not, Mayor.
Okay, seeing no hands raised, public comment is closed. Of course, it's not closed. Brian Donahue for two minutes, please.
Okay, this is, I think it's a lame-brained idea. It's an im, improper use of public funds. And it's clearly directed at the, you know, the vanity of, uh, the, the council, especially the, the mayor. It's clearly directed at, to appeal to the vanity of the mayor. It's, like I said, it's inappropriate use of public funds. Uh, it's obvious a lot of public money has already been spent on it by the, listening to Chad Smalley's presentation. And the benefits are, you know, completely, you know, erroneous. And, you know, it's, it's, it's an absurd thing. This is not the people's business. I will let my silence roar for the remainder of my time.
Very much. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, well, in public comment, turn to discussion. Member Pryforce.
Hi, um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, um, I don't know why people wouldn't think I would not be supportive of this. I mean, I, I want everyone on the City Council, uh, uh, to win and be successful. And if the, uh, and from my understanding from the history about this dialogue between the mayor and and, uh, and the leadership of its company, and, uh, thank you, uh, Richard, and, uh, everyone who's here in town. I hope you'll enjoy Emeryville. Um, you know, no, I, I'm, I'm very supportive of it. I'm, I'm more of a yes-but person, if you all have, uh, have watched me, uh, with these meetings. Um, so the but is, uh, so one, I do have concerns around the sponsorship. Um, and what does sponsorship actually mean as someone who has a fundraising background? Um, I mean, we've made enough relationships with, with, especially with developers, uh, real estate companies in order to, you know, ask them, hey, if you do want to sponsor this. Um, but, um, according to the deal, um, i- is the sponsorship also, uh, us pulling our public dollars, um, in case we don't, um, raise, uh, money from, I guess, private and, we have some from private entities. Uh, and so, so I do have some questions around, around that because one, one thing about sponsorship is that, uh, when you ask once, okay, but sometimes acting, asking uh, twice, especially within the same year, can be a little harder. Um, so that's why you want to ask for, for like, for, for the whole year. And so, uh, so I do have some concerns, um, around that, um, but if the money is there, the money is there. Um, I, it, this is, um, uh, from what I've read, from what I watched, and uh, and some of my policy decisions, unfortunately, unfortunately, uh, I'll, I'll pass over to my daughter. And I said, so kid, what do you think of this? And she said, oh, it's, 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 it's kind of cool, you know, and she says, but it's very white. Right? This is from like the things that she, uh, was looking at. You know, though, you know, uh, I think the person, they are mine, like, even though there have been uh, some racers of, of color, um, it's, it's a very white, spare me, come on. I mean, golf, you know, like, I mean, there are sports that are just very white until, um, um, you know, they become more, um, diverse and inclusive. And what I'm, what I'm concerned is that this, we're going to do something that is as Emeryville as possible. And so, so I hope that, uh, as we're talking throughout this deal, that, uh, that, uh, that the leadership, um, those who, uh, are on, um, on the company, uh, side are open, uh, to the idea of branding and co-branding some of our small businesses because, um, the history of this is coming out of the sort of formula, um, you know, racing, uh, tradition, and so there's always a lot of brands. Um, and so, um, yeah, and so, uh, brands from our local businesses, uh, being able to, um, and, and they not pay it, you know, this is something free. Um, you know, something that makes it much more Emeryville outside of just the reasonable efforts to source locally. I mean, and that's good. I mean, uh, I, I like to see that, but, um, but it's just from a visual standpoint, and I hope that, uh, my councilmembers can kind of understand it, that, um, that it, 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 from a visual standpoint, you know, seeing everyone, seeing those who are attendance, that sort of thing, uh, that there are some sort of markers that say, hey, this is really Emeryville. Like, you're, you're seeing these companies, you're seeing the local barber shop on, on the sleeve of one of the racers, or you're seeing, um, you know, some of our, uh, stores, um, uh, a, at Bay Street. You're seeing their, uh, their, their, uh, re, representation, their, their branding on, on, on the clothing, and, and I think that that, uh, can go a long way, um, to making this feel much more Emeryville. But other than that, I'm, I'm very, I'm, I'm supportive of it, and I, and I want, uh, everyone, of course, uh, to win, and, and anyone has any ideas similar to this. Um, yes, and, and, and in, in the concern around like, uh, the m, money aspects, um, as well, um, I just think, I, I just feel that when it comes to events, um, uh, Chad, uh, mentioned that the nascent, um, aspect of it. When it comes to events, um, they're all, they're, uh, I, I was contacted by the, um, by the M, uh, the, the, the high school reunion. They're doing, they're doing a high school reunion for Emory. And so, you know, I think about that. I think about how we can invest in Emeryville and residents of Emeryville and workers and students in Emeryville, um, or even like every, uh, Emeryville Pride Parade. Uh, like, I think about those sort of things, and so I don't, and, and I, and I, and I suggest those ideas not as a counter to, but sort of encompassing, that Emeryville can be both those things. Can be both the e-scooter, um, uh, race and can also be, um, supporting of local, uh, initiatives that could end up being just as nascent. And so that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember Mora.
So, uh, personally, I'm very excited about this. Uh, I, our city is very much at the forefront of rethinking transit and mobility. Uh, so this race, I think, is a really, really good fit. Uh, I see people, I'm on the greenway, uh, multiple times a day. I see people, um, of, of all ages and colors riding scooters, bikes. Uh, so I think it's a, uh, can be quite inclusive. Um, I want to thank the Director Smalley for, uh, the way that the contract has been, uh, developed. I think uh, it's going to be a great draw for people coming to the city. Uh, and I like how it limits the city's potential financial, uh, downsides, where if money is not raised, there's actually the opportunity to, uh, decide not to, not to do the race. Alternatively, uh, we can raise in excess, and it can be a financial, uh, uh, windfall or benefit for the city. Um, so I, I think that's a great framework, uh, for this event and uh, future events, uh, that the city's interested in hosting. So, uh, overall, I, great job to staff, and, uh, I'm, I fully So, uh, overall, I, great job to staff and, uh, I'm, I fully support it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, I want to echo Councilmember Mora's comments and, um, just a thank you to Paul and Christie, John Kennedy, Ed, Chad, you Mayor Bouters and former Councilmember Medina and working on all of this for the last few months. Um, I, I'm really excited about the, the revenue aspect personally. It's no secret that Emeryville was hit very hard by the pandemic and our hotel revenues were not, um, where they typically are. Um, we haven't had an event like this where it's like distinctly Emeryville's. It belongs to Emeryville. It's happening in Emeryville. Uh, a lot of times, you know, we get the overflow from larger events in the city, in Oakland, in Berkeley. And I really think this is, um, an, an awesome opportunity for us to just have something that's distinctly for us within town. And, um, also the, 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 written within the contract, it being a multi-year event where people can look forward to it in twenty-four and twenty-five. They know it's happening. They know it's going to be here. And they're expecting it and they're excited for it. I think it's a wonderful opportunity, um, just to have something that truly belongs to us. So I'm, I'm really excited. And again, thank you for everyone that worked on it.
Thank you. I'll just, uh, add, I want to thank Richard and Khalil and the entire team at uh, E-Scooter International Championships for, uh, reaching out to me this past summer. As Richard mentioned, um, to talk about our shared vision for sustainability and safe micro-mobility, infrastructure and design and the opportunities to give people meaningful choices in transportation and community livability. Um, that conversation grew into a bigger conversation about the expansion of this sport, which I'm very proud to say is very gender diverse. There, it's a, it's a gender, mixed gender races. Um, there are people from all walks of life and it's a very racially diverse, uh, uh, group of athletes who participate in this competition, actually. Um, and so it has, uh, a lot of the goals, uh, that they have, which are equity, accessibility and sustainability. Their goals as an organization align with many of the goals of the city, uh, which is why I continue to have a conversation with them in the fall. Um, and I appreciate the, uh, council, uh, supporting, having that conversation further. And I appreciate the letter of intent. And I want to really give a shout out to the staff at the City of Emeryville with a special recognition to City Attorney John Kennedy, um, and Assistant City Attorney Christie Crowell and Ed, uh, Low, who is also in her office. Um, for the dedication and the amount of time they spent, along with the attorneys from, um, ESC's team, for the amount of work that went into negotiating this contract. I also want to really just give recognition to Chad Smalley for not just this item, but for all the work he does um, on economic development and representing, uh, the city's best interests in, um, helping make our city unique and recognizable, um, beyond just being, uh, business storefronts, but actually who, who is actually conducting business here. There are a lot of really great ideas and, um, support for this from the council members this evening. And I know that the team at ESC and our staff will really incorporate that into the plan. We have significant amount of work ahead, um, as it relates to fundraising to um, achieve the sponsorships that this race needs. But, uh, I had the privilege of spending time with the ESC team here yesterday while they were, um, conducting their site visit of the city. And, uh, there's some really great opportunities that lie ahead. And I think, you know, the motto here, as I've often said, is small but mighty. And I just really want to, uh, lift up the opportunity we have to, um, be a leader and, and elevate the conversation around micro-mobility, safe streets, options for young people and old people, but in particular, young people, um, and sustainable future for all of us. Member Pryforce?
So the problem with saying that any organization or company, um, or in, or an event is as diverse is that it doesn't allow them to make, uh, improvements. And so, um, it, it's, uh, I, I would, I would suggest that, um, in terms of diversity, um, in terms of inclusion, uh, that there are efforts made. Um, because I want to see this event happen. I want to see it successful. Um, but, you know, it, it, I do also, uh, want to see improvements in how, um, and on how ESC can be, uh, inclusive of, of other folks. I mean, even if it could be, uh, uh, prior to this event, um, there being a, uh, sort of workshops that are provided to, um, to some of our local, uh, uh, young people. Um, that, that there, that there are efforts to, um, to make it, uh, uh, diverse. I don't, I don't, I don't see that. And if, if my fifteen-year-old could see that, um, then, um, could see that it's not diverse, then, you know, I, 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 it's, it, it's not. I mean, it's European. I mean, essentially, we are saying, hey, we want a European, uh, entity to come in and do this stuff, um, uh, for us. And, um, you know, and and I think that it, it can, and I think, I, I would like to see it happen. But at the same time, I am also, um, when I talk to Emeryville residents and, uh, and workers and students, as I do all the time, um, I, when I defend the efforts or the work or the agenda or anything related to the city council, um, I do it as honestly as I can and as sincerely as I can. And when I talk to people, I want to be able to say, hey, so this company is coming in. And then people say, well, you know, they're not Emeryville. You know, I, I understand that. I get it. But, um, they're making all these efforts. Um, and, uh, and, and these, and these are the things that they're doing, uh, to make it, to make it feel like your tax dollars, um, are being put to work in a way that benefits Emeryville. And so that's, that's where I'm coming from, uh, uh, with this.
Anybody else? I'd like to make a motion to approve this contract and resolution.
I second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mayor Bouters, seconded by Councilmember Mora to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye. Thank you. And we look forward to working with you, Richard, and everybody at ESC on the relationship we have in the months ahead. Item twelve point three is the city council vacancy, the discussion of applicant interview format and direction to staff. I believe, April, you will be providing a brief oral report on this?
Mayor, I have a short slide presentation, if, if that's all right, to go through, uh, everything that's in the staff report.
Yeah, of course. Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor and Council, tonight we're going to discuss the applicant interview process, uh, which is the next step in the, uh, city council vacancy appointment. As you recall, on January seventeenth, council directed staff to pursue the, um, appointment for the council vacancy. They have six, you have sixty days to fill the vacancy, so we're up against a deadline of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Council established a fifteen-day application period. We posted the application for the council vacancy on the city's website on January twenty-seventh. And it closes this Friday, February tenth, at five P M. After the deadline, staff will redock the personal information and forward all of the applications received to the city council. Just as a reminder, here is our, uh, appointment timeline. We are right here at February seventh, where council is going to discuss and decide on an interview format. Again, the application period closes on Friday. Uh, applications will be made public and distributed to the city council on February sixteenth. Uh, council then has two, uh, regularly scheduled meetings where they can interview applicants and make the appointment. If the appointment isn't made at the March seventh meeting, there's also an opportunity to call a special meeting if necessary. Uh, the applicant pool. So the application included a question about voter registration status. That is really the only qualification that is, uh, necessary to serve as a council member. Uh, we won't know the total number of applicants until the close of the application period, uh, this Friday. But I can tell you that as of, uh, this time, we have received four applications for the council vacancy. All the applicants will be contacted and invited to attend the meeting on February twenty-first. We're hoping to give them some, uh, insight into how, into how the interview process will work at that meeting after council discusses it this evening. Uh, the applicant pool, what, uh, we've provided some options that we listed in the staff report that, uh, council can, uh, take to, um, for the people that they'd like to interview. So you receive all of the applications. And, uh, at the meeting, council can conduct a preliminary review of the applications and select the people to interview. Or, uh, another possible option would be to interview all of the qualified applicants. And again, qualification is a, uh, registered voter in the city of Emeryville. Uh, we have received an application where the, um, applicant is not registered in the city of Emeryville. The interview format, to provide parity among the application, app, the applicants, it's recommended that the interview format be similar for everyone. This doesn't mean that the exact same questions have to be asked of every single applicant. There is, uh, a, a time at the end, uh, of the interview process where there's wrap-up questions and comments from both the uh, council and the interviewee. If at that point, councils, one of the council members has heard something from the applicant during their oral presentation or that they saw in their resume or application that they want to, uh, delve further into, that's the opportunity to do that. But again, the, the interview format should be similar for everyone. Um, and how staff is asking that that be done is that there, uh, we're recommending a time limit for each interview and predetermined interview questions. This is one example of how a, uh, fifteen-minute interview would go. We're assuming four interview questions, one from each council member. Give four minutes for the applicant to introduce themselves. Each council member would ask their question and, uh, we'd allow two minutes each for the answer. And then three minutes for wrap-up questions and comments. This could be reduced down to a, a twelve-minute time limit by reducing the applicant introduction to two minutes and the wrap-up to two minutes. I don't recommend going any lower than twelve minutes if the council chooses to use the interview questions in the middle. Um, and this will help staff plan for the meeting, knowing how, um, how long each applicant is going to be given for the interview process. Staff's also recommending that council have predetermined interview questions. In the staff report, there were some, uh, possible examples. Uh, there are the broad and general, um, why are you interested in serving on the Emeryville City Council? What are your ideas to encourage citizen engagement in the city? And what unique experiences or strengths do you possess that can benefit you as a council, as a member of the city council? These are just, uh, examples and they aren't, um, it isn't necessary, council could come up with and create their own interview questions if they'd like. Uh, so what we, we'd like tonight is council to dis, oop, sorry about that. Uh, we'd like council to, um, discuss the application review, uh, process, what they plan to do on the twenty-first. I know that you don't know how many applications you've received at this point. Um, but if you want to discuss what will happen, whether you'll do a preliminary review and select applicants to interview or interview all the qualified applicants, uh, that's something that we'd like council to discuss tonight. Uh, staff recommends that council also determine an interview time limit, whether that be fifteen or some other amount of time. Uh, we'd like to know how many, um, how many minutes are going to be allotted to each interview. And then we'd also ask that council determine the interview questions. Uh, one possible option is to use the three example questions and create one more or to create other questions. So that sums up the staff report and those are the, um, recommendations from staff and the things that we'd like direction on this evening. I am available for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, April. Um, we'll leave those, those, that slide up right there if you could for right now. What I'd, what I'd like to do is first invite, uh, public comment and then we can walk through, um, we can walk through these decision points to put together a interview process that everyone agrees upon, hopefully. So, uh, at this time, I'll call for public comment. Member of the public who wishes to comment on this item will have two minutes to give comment on the interview process. And before I call for the oral comment, do we receive any written comment on this item, April?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Uh, please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
Okay, so we're, last election that we had where the people, uh, voted on their choice. We voted for Khalima Pryforce, um, and he won the, the, uh, the most votes. So it just turns out, well, even, even ahead of time, we knew that Mr. Pryforce was a different kind of uh, council, uh, uh, wannabe. He posited himself as an independent voice and it turns out he's, has been an independent voice. So the people of Emeryville want an independent voice, at least one. We know that because of the, the election of Councilman Pryforce. So that begs the question, why would this council, the majority, have gone with an appointment? Because the appointment is going to be up to a three to, you know, possibly three to one vote a-against, uh, an independent voice. So, you know, the most likely scenario is it's going to be a yes vote for the, for, uh, the Mayor, Mayor Bouters. And, uh, other than the obvious that you want to consolidate power, you being the majority, council majority, uh, other than that, why would you do that? We've shown that we wanted, we like independent voices on our council. We showed that at our, at the last election. And yet, here we go down this path of an appointment. And it, you have never fully explained why this is in our interest. And so, I hear, I hear, I'll give, uh, the mayor a chance to explain why this appointment, as opposed to having us elect our council member, how, why that's in our interest, how that is in our interest. Especially given the fact that we have shown that we like independent voices, uh, and we like to make the choice ourselves. So go ahead, council member, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor Bouters, tell us why this is, uh, in our best interest.
Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will move to discussion. Members, uh, with the items put before us, the first question is whether or not we would like to do a preliminary review and select applicants to interview, which essentially means a paper review only. Um, or whether we would just like to interview all qualified applicants. It could also potentially be, I suppose, some hybrid of the two, where if there were over a certain number of applicants, for example, we might, you know, if fifty people applied, are we going to really interview fifty people or would we try to like, uh, paper that down to the top certain number of choices? Um, so that's the first question before us and I'll start with Member Mora.
Yeah, thanks for the introduction. I, I think just as a practical matter, it makes sense to do some type of paper interview screening. Uh, that, that being said, if there's four people who've applied and that number remains at four, uh, we could make some type of, I, I would support some sort of, uh, arrangement where we say, uh, if the number exceeds those four, uh, then we do a, uh, paper review and majority of council uh, would agree on, uh, which, which candidate's got selected for interview. And that's purely as a practical matter because, uh, the fifteen-minute intervals can add up quite quickly.
Okay. We've got one vote to cap the number of folks. Uh, Member Pryforce?
Yeah, I'm for the, the latter, which is to interview all applicants, um, especially if it stays at four or even five, six. It, um, yeah, I, I think it'd be good to, um, to chat with them all.
Okay. Number, uh, Vice Mayor Welch?
I think a, a higher model would work. Sometimes people submit an application that really reveals that they didn't take the application portion seriously. So I think we could screen out any potential, like, joke applicants if there was one or two. Um, and then move forward with the remaining more. two, and then move forward with the remaining more serious applicants.
Okay, so I heard the whole spectrum from folks as to their interest. So, you know, I, I am kind of also on the spectrum, I suppose, here a little bit about where we could land. I am happy to interview all applicants if it's under, if we cap it at a certain number for the interest of time. I'm also happy to say that if we go above that, if we get above that cap number, that we would essentially agree to reduce down to that cap number, so we don't have to pick, you know, like we don't have to screen out everybody, we could just simply say, you know, put your, your, you know, if we said the number was five, and let's say there's six applicants or seven applicants, we could say everyone, you know, put, submit your five, based on paper, what are your five people you want to interview? We could just give the, the five that have the most votes on those pages, we just score them on a sheet, and those are the five that get interviewed. So we could do it at the same meeting that way if we wanted to. Open to doing it however folks want, just need to figure out where, where people stand on, on this and where they want to go. Councilmember Mora?
So after hearing that perspective, I do like the idea of putting together a list of the top five to be interviewed. But one clarifying question would be, are we looking for majority concurrence on the, each of those names?
I think what we would probably do, we could, we could, we could discuss this, but you know, however we want to do it, there's a couple ways to do it. One, you could do a scored ranking, so if there is, your, your person that you listed number one is worth five points, if you really wanted to interview them, number two is worth four points, three points, two points, one point, and then anyone below that gets zero, and then all the scores show up. It could also just be a tally score, right? So if everybody lists candidate A, they would have four votes to be interviewed. If, you know, a few people, you know, somebody, you're only going to get five votes, right? So some people will get no votes, and we would have some fours, some threes, twos, maybe ones or zeros. And in that situation, we would just basically cut it off at number five, whatever got, whatever five people came on top. And if we had a tie, we would probably just include anybody who's in the tie. So there's a couple ways you could do that.
Maybe I could.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to end with just this last summation of my, my thinking on it. It might just be simpler, I think. Say we have all the paper applicants in front of us. Say I think seven of them deserve an interview. Say you think five deserve an interview. Say, then at that point, we can then see which, which names from each council member has majority support for an interview, and then we interview those people.
That's a, that's an option as well. Yep, viable. Member Pryforce?
So I review applications all the time from organizations and for fellows. What we do typically, in, especially in the philanthropy space, is that we score questions. So, so what I'm hearing is scoring the applicant, as opposed to scoring the questions, because scoring questions and their responses, well, you're scoring their responses to those questions, then allows you to create a score for each applicant. And then, and then you share what, about that question, how their response that you liked, liked about it. The reason why I am pro interviewing everyone is because I want to make this process as inclusive as possible. And so I don't want people walking away saying that I never even got to speak to anybody, or I never even got to, I never got to really engage. And I'm pro engagement when it comes to the Emeryville public, because this applicant to qualify is a resident. And so, and as a resident, then I, they're one, yeah, I, I want, I want to speak to them, I want to, I want to hear from them. So that's why I am pro the, pro interviewing everyone, especially since it looked, you know, we have four, four applicants, and an application period is ending very soon. I think that, I mean, if the, if the issue is because of time, well, I mean, this is, this, we were elected to do this. And so, I mean, I, you know, just put, we just put the time towards it. And then, yeah, and so, but going back to the scoring system, we need to be very, very clear how we, we're going to score, in order to make sure that this is a very transparent and inclusive system that is set up. Because the last thing I want is to place us in, in, in legal trouble, because we've chosen a scoring or, or, or any process that is discriminatory or, or is weighted in any way, you know? Because us in, you know, in the space that I'm in, that's always of significant concern, because we're trying to reverse the ways that black and brown applicants have been discriminated against in the past. And one of those things, especially for example, applicants who may have had experiences in the criminal justice system, they may necessarily not be the most literate. And so written applications, we, one of the things that we do is that we will have them submit a video. And so they may be able to articulate themselves in that video a lot better than they do in, when it comes to writing. And several times actually, I have come across applicants who didn't really do a great job selling themselves, and then what I, and then I found out that they did, they did videos, and people had did videos of them that actually spoke to their story and who they really are, and I, and then I was driven to tears. And so, and you know, and I said, okay, well, this person doesn't necessarily can't put their story into words, but they may be able to, but that doesn't necessarily disqualify them to become a, a member of city council. And so, so that's why I am leaning towards interviewing everyone, give everyone a chance, make this as inclusive as possible.
Yeah, and just to be clear, we're not asking anyone to submit to a written interview, they're being interviewed orally. Anyone else?
But, yeah, but however, for clarification purposes, you're saying that we are deciding on whether or not they should be interviewed based upon their written submissions?
Oh, we are, we are, just, the discussion is, do you want to interview, do you want to cap the number of people to interview? If there's a decision to cap that, then we have to figure out how to do that, right? I'm supportive of interviewing everybody. I've heard you say the same thing, right? So we have others who are proposing that we could potentially limit that, because as was noted by another member of the council, you could get a whole bunch of people who has, you know, for, for the hell of it, just choose to apply, don't actually have any serious intent of maybe being a council member. Sometimes that is evident in the way people apply, right? If you have a person who says, my name is, applies and says, my name is Bozo the Clown, and my, my goal, if I'm elected or appointed to this position, is to be to put a red nose on every person who's on the city council at all council meetings. Do you want to interview that person for 15 minutes? That's my question.
Yeah, so that's a good question. So, yeah, so if.
That's the point that Member Welch was raised. Member Welch is asking us to consider that, and that's why I'm asking you, because I agree with you, I would be willing to interview everyone, but a legitimate question has been raised, and I didn't hear you respond to that question, I heard you give a bunch of, you went to the next question. The question in front of you is, if somebody, if five people say, I want to come in, I want to talk about, you know, donkeys, are you, and that's what I want to do on the councils, I want to give everyone a donkey, are you willing to then endure potentially multiple hours of that? I have been in many public meetings, especially in the recent COVID era, where people have done these things, and it is a massive and colossal waste of time. And then you have to ask yourself, if that's equitable and just to, if we randomly draw the order in which people go, if some person has to wait two to three hours to hear all the joke people go first, and they're, they're, you know, they're ready to go to bed and they get interviewed at 11:30 PM, do you think that's fair?
So that, I, so your question is, I don't think is an effective question. The, the question was whether or not we would lean towards a, a written process, a hybrid of the process of where.
That is not the question. That is not the question. The question is, the question, that's not the question, please let me rephrase the question. The question is right on the screen. Do you want to do a preliminary review, or would you like to go to interview all people? I heard you say you want to interview all people. I agree with you. Question that's being asked by the other members is, if we agree to interview all people, are you willing to interview people and continue a full interview with someone who may be very evidently not interested in being interviewed for the position, but in the answering of the questions is making a mockery of the process? Are you okay going through that process?
Okay, so, as I say, it's not an effective question, because you're doing, you're using a hypothetical of someone being, so you're immediately assuming that someone's making a mockery of the process. What we have before us, facts, is four people, okay? So one, we have not defined what the cap is for us to determine whether or not we, it would be, it would be in the best interest of time. And so, yeah, we can have four Bozos the Clowns, but it, but if the issue is, is that we don't have enough time to interview four Bozos the Clowns, then we need to make that very clear on what that, on what that cap is. The second is, is that if we want to, if that the preliminary review, what is the preliminary review? The preliminary review is a written process, correct?
If we do a preliminary review, it would be written, it would just be, it would just be asking them, as it does, to state why they're interested, and that's it.
Exactly. And so, and what I shared was an anecdote of those who may not necessarily do best at being able to provide the best written example, the best written example of why they, yes, exactly. And so, so I fully understood the question, I just got into a little bit more detail as to the specifics, because like I said, I want to make sure that this is a fair and equal and inclusive process as possible. So if we're going to do a written process, and then we're going to decide on interviews based upon the written process, then my suggestion is that we interview everyone unless we reach to a certain cap, right? And so, for example, if we said 10 people, if we have 10 applicants, then, more than, more than 10 applicants, then let's go hybrid. If we have less than 10 applicants, then let's interview applicants. And it could, once again, it could be five, it could be six, whatever it is that this body can, can define what that is. But let's be very clear about that.
That's what we're trying to do. Thank you. Vice Mayor Welch?
So let me rephrase, and I think maybe the way it's stated on the slide is not getting us to where we need to be. So a preliminary review, just to screen the applications, to make sure that there isn't one that says, I'm a wiener, is applying to be on the council, it's just to make sure that these are serious applicants, because you can turn in the application, especially if it's modeled after the boards and committees' application, people can just submit, put their name, address, and not answer any of the questions. I think it's fair to say, if someone's not willing to answer some of the questions on the application, they probably won't take being a council member very seriously, right? I think we're, we can all agree to that, hopefully. So the prelimi, preliminary review isn't necessarily going to result in anyone being removed from the process. We might only get four, we have, what, 72 hours left? We might get 17 more, but we might end up with six. They all might be filled out the, the application, and it's of substance, whether you agree or not, whatever, it's not, that's not the, the point at the moment. It's just a preliminary review to make sure that these are actual serious applicants that actually filled out the application and then need to be moved forward. That does not automatically mean anyone is going to be disqualified based off of just reviewing to make sure they actually finished the application. That's in what my mind, what I was thinking of when I said preliminary review, to make sure there weren't any joke applicants, or someone just put their name in a P O. box and then sent in the application. That's what I meant. So I just wanted to clarify that, and then to state that, because it says preliminary review and select applicants to interview, or interview all, I don't think necessarily if we do a preliminary review, that everyone, anyone would get disqualified, or left out, or whatever. So I wanted to state that, because I think we're getting off track. I don't know if we, has, does anyone feel good about a number for a cap, if we wanted to do the cap way? That seems fine.
Thank you.
I think we can have multiple pathways. I think we can say, I don't think we have to say, this is the dead set way we're going to do this. We can say if we reach up to a certain level, that, again, because we're on a time limit for this, having 100 applicants, each have 15 minutes, that could take, like, this is still going to happen within a regular council meeting, so we'll still have other council business. And if it goes over, we're going to have to be scheduling special meetings. So we, we want to stay on, on our, our set time that we have to get this done, because we, we're under the wire at this point. So we have to get through this. But if we have a, a massive amount of people that apply, is everyone okay with saying we can cap it at this through a preliminary review? If it doesn't get there, we can do a preliminary view, just to review, to make sure that it's actually regular applications, and then we can move forward. Can we have two different ways, like, because right now, we, we actually don't know how many applicants we're actually going to have. We have four right now, but the deadline is Friday.
So that's an item for the discussion. Member Mora?
So I just want to, so I concur with what Councilmember Welch said. I think it's important to screen out unserious candidates, which there may or may not be any, right? And I, once their names are in front of us, and what they've, what they've written, why they want to be on city council, is there, we can decide who's a serious or unserious candidate. Personally, I, I would like to support, I would like to interview anybody who is a serious candidate. And I, I've heard the same sentiment from Councilmember Welch, I've heard the same sentiment from Mayor Bowders, and from Councilmember Pryforce. So I, I think I'd like to go back to the, the proposal that I made, which is, we have the, the names in front of us, everybody, say I see 10 applicants, I think these are 10 serious applicants, I say we should interview these, these folks. And if everybody agrees and puts, if there's a majority support for those 10 names, then we interview them. If one person strikes the majority of us as unserious, with clown noses, or donkeys, or whatnot, then they simply get dropped off. So to me, that seems elegant, it doesn't involve points, it doesn't involve a, a hybrid model, where you're picking a, a minimum number to interview, it simply allows us to see who's in front of us and who we think should be interviewed. So I guess I'll wait until we can make a motion, and that's what I would propose.
Okay. So this, this is staff recommendation. Excuse me, excuse me, you're not, you haven't asked to be recognized, would you like to be recognized, please?
Uh, yeah, sorry.
Okay. Member Pryforce?
So the, the staff recommendation is no less than 12 minutes. Could we go back to the previous slide when it comes to the, the questions? Okay, so we have three questions so far. The question, on the, on the next slide, it mentioned three questions. Are, are we revising these questions, or are we adding three more questions?
As, as the staff report outlined, these are just examples. So when we get through the first bullet here, right, we'll then determine what we want to set as a time limit. We could do the second or third bullet in either order, as far as I'm concerned, it don't have to be in that order. But the interview questions, you could use the three example questions, as it says right there, or what I was going to propose is that we could each submit our own question here, right now, if you have a question, we could agree on four questions. And I was going to propose that, because there was an example of three minutes for kind of follow-up, that instead every member get the opportunity, after all four questions have been asked, every member can ask one follow-up question, based on what they heard the applicant say, with a one-minute response each. So essentially, we would have an equitable process whereby there's no member controlling the interview or the conversation, or going beyond any. Controlling the interview or the conversation or, um, going beyond any, you know, amount of time that we need to fill. With members by asking more questions and taking time away from other members. So that was going to be a suggestion, but I, I think. The amount of time, right, the time limit, if, if we are in a hypothetical space of. How many people apply? It's only four people now. Well, do we think it will be more than ten? I don't think it'll be more than ten, probably. Right? I don't think it'll be more than ten. So, um, you know, we could go with the twelve to fifteen minutes. It's, it's fine. I think. The details of how much time we want to give should really be more contoured around what kind of interview we want to have. Right? It's more important, I think, to decide not the time, but what do we want to know from the applicants? Um, once we kind of know what we want from the applicants, then we can say in order to make this a manageable process, how do we want to sculpt the time? For that process. So I would probably rearrange the third and second bullet to have the conversation that way, to make sure we get the content we want and then we can. Frame the time around how to prioritize the content. But I don't think we've reached that yet, just because I want to make sure that there's some level of, um. Some level of agreement about how many, right? Because it kind of goes out the window. The best laid plan could go out the window if. People feel that we've got a very structured process, but we, um, you know, I, I've heard some folks say we don't want to. Interview somebody who might not really be serious. Um, and there's a good reason to, to, to be cautious about that. It may be that we, you know, I, I'm, I'm somebody who, I'll just be very frank. I think it's worth our time to interview everybody. I think, um, if people want to put on a show and make a display of itself and, um. Let everybody know that they're not serious, then they can do that for fifteen minutes and we cannot ask them follow-up questions and we can move on. Um, it is probably not the best use of public time to do that, and I will just say that. Um, in, in reviewing what other agencies have done, most other agencies, the reason this is here, April didn't invent this. This is because. Um, this is what most agencies do. They usually do paper screen where everyone gets an application. We get to read them all and we come in and we choose five people to interview. And it's kind of a set process that allows us to spend more time with the applicants we really want to hear from. It allows us to make more time available, whereas if we do a limitless thing, we have to be more. Uh, stingy on time because it is, to your point, of balancing of the time that we need to take to do this, but also it's not just our time in, in the public role. It's. The time of the applicants, right? So, and the amount of time they have to wait to do it too. So I think that's the balancing act that we have to consider and all staff has done here is provide us with options. They're not making us do anything. Um, and so we just have to decide what the priority is. Member Mora? Your hand went down, so maybe you had no comment. Okay?
Sorry, uh, uh, I meant to unmute. Uh, are we, so we're still discussing the screening process? Um, i- is that right?
I'm trying to get us, I'm trying to get us to a place of just general consensus about. How we are going to select applicants. Is it going to be all people who apply are selected for an interview? Or is it going to be that, um, only qualified applicants, as that second minor bullet says? Interview the qualified applicants, which means we, we, we read the, we read however many applications come in and we have predetermined as a group, we're gonna, we're gonna get. Um, five people. Right? And we, we basically pick which five people we interview and then we interview those five people. Which makes, makes our time with them easier and a little more flexible. So I'm just trying to get a consensus around that right now. Member Pryforce?
So, yeah, so, uh, so we are in agreement, um, uh, well, I do agree with you. Uh, that, um, that I would like to, uh, have all the applicants. I think. The issue is that the second bullet point really should have been the first, uh, bullet point, uh, because, uh, we are making. Um, we are placing a, a big emphasis on time. And so, so by determining the time. Um, uh, of how long the interview process will take, once we determine that, then we can sort of get an idea. So for example. Uh, if we're saying that, um, uh, r- right here says that fifteen minutes for each applicant. So if you're talking about fifteen minutes for each applicant, then for applicants, that's one hour. Right? And so if we say, well, we want the whole process to take two hours, right? And so that's. That's what eight applicants? And so, uh, so I think that that, so that's one of the reasons why the cap is really important because then. Um, it allows us to, based on the time that we have, uh, available, or we, or we would, or we would prefer. Uh, then that helps us to determine how, uh, what the best route is in terms of, uh, whether or not we do. Um, the written process as a pre-screening to the, the interview, um, uh, you know. Uh, or we do a, uh, or a straight interview process.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Okay, so. I propose we screen for. Joke non-serious candidates, qualified. I mean, I feel like that is subjective, what qualified is. So I think people needed to make. A serious or clearly. Put some time into the application. That's what I feel like needs to be the qualification, but qualified as far as like how they answered, what they answered. They needed to give an answer and it needs to. Have not serious actual legal information on it. I think we can all agree to that. And then. Time limit. I don't. Where we can't determine the time as far as, again, right now, because we don't know specifically how many. Applicants we're going to have, so I don't think we can say we want it to fall under this amount of time, so that's actually not even a possibility right now. Fifteen minutes means they have up to fifteen minutes. So if we want to lower and say that they have twelve, that's fine too, but. They have fifteen minutes. Is it gonna take fifteen minutes? Again, we don't know. They might get up there and get through all the questions in eight minutes because they have very concise answers. That part is just. Are we going to, how much are we going to give them to answer all of the questions? So that part is clear too, and then we're not even to what potential interview questions we're on. But I think we're getting, I think we're all confusing each other right now. I think it's clear that we will screen for just absolute nonsense on an application. And then we do want to interview all the applicants that are actual serious. Again, it's not necessarily. How they answered the questions. It was an actual. Attempt to answer the question, so we want to interview everyone. And do we just want to say fifteen minutes? You have up to fifteen minutes to get through all of the questions. Is everyone okay with that? Cause I think we're kind of all talking in circles right now.
We are a little bit. Let me, let me try. Okay. Let me, let me try this. Let's, let's actually move to a different item on this list to see if that will help us. Shake this loose a little bit. Um, so let's actually just turn to the next item, which might be helpful. For an interview time limit, um, so as Member Welch just said, fifteen minutes, you know, for each applicant. As was proposed on an earlier slide, there was a breakdown of the time that offered a certain number of minutes cap. There you go. Thank you so much at the bottom. Um, there was a self-introduction period, council interview questions of two minutes each, that, you know, that example is, uh, I'm supposing to have four questions. And then wrap-up questions, we call that follow-up questions or comments, uh, three minutes. Um, you know, the other way to do this, as I was thinking, was to change applicant self-introduction to three minutes. And then add one minute to wrap-up questions and comments. Uh, that gets us to the same outcome and then that way we can have four basic interview questions that are standard between everyone. We would listen to them. They would just, it would be a very, to, to make this fair, it would be. The, the, the clock would be on for your self-introduction. It would go off at, at three minutes. At the end of three minutes, we would then begin the first question. They would have two minutes to answer each of the four questions. We would all just listen to their answers. And then, um, members would get a chance to ask one follow-up question each after they've heard our answers to all four questions and that way. Um, of the four minutes that are at the end, one minute is dedicated to providing an answer to each follow-up question a member might have. Um, so that was kind of the way I was thinking of it. That gets us to about sixteen minutes per person. Because you assume that there's a little bit of time reading each question, right? So about sixteen minutes total. Is that something that? Uh, folks think is in a, an appropriate, uh, outline of the time and the process for, for those applicants? Or what's your hand is up?
I had a quick, uh, clarifying question because this is going to be, this is an action item. When would the public have the opportunity to comment on their potential appointees?
Right, that's a great question. So the way this would work is, um, we, the way I, I would envision doing this is from a process point of view. The applicant's names would be placed into a basket. We would have the clerk pull a name randomly from the basket so that there's no predetermined order. Right? Um, the person would come up to the podium. They would, we would, we would go over this process at the outset of the item so that they understand it all at the same time. Um, candidate number four is selected to come up first. They come up first, they get to get their three minutes. They get their four questions with two minutes each. They get their four minutes at the end, which is an opportunity for a follow-up if members have them. Um, and then after we have, uh, done each of the applicant's interviews, all of the applicants are completed. Then there would be public comment, right? Cause the agenda presentation is to hear from all applicants. The public gets to hear from all applicants. Then there is a public comment period where the public can, can opine on what they've heard from all the applicants. When the public comment period is over, then there is a discussion, right? And then the discussion, the way it would be formatted is. Each council member would be asked, we would go through each applicant in the order they presented. Each council member would be asked to share their perspective in less than two minutes on the council member, or the applicant, I should say. So they would be able to say, these are the things I heard, these are the things I liked. Um, and the reason we would do that, that way is so that every council member has the benefit of hearing. From each of their colleagues to gain full perspective on what everybody likes and maybe doesn't like about an applicant. We would go around the, the, the group on each of the applicants, just providing our, our, our observations. Not a pla- providing an opinion. It would just be your observations. So my observations are X, Y, Z, so that that way, um, everybody has the benefit of having heard all the information, not just for themselves. And not just from the public, but from each other. Once we've had the, the roundtable of what is everyone's, um, just observations or, or first impressions of that. Then we would have the debate and wherein members would then get the chance to make their case for who they think is the best applicant and why. Um, and we would continue that discussion until it was exhausted. So that would be the process, the, the, the best I could propose for a process. Member Pryforce?
So I have, um, I, I remember, uh, in the process of learning what it is to be on city council, I have watched. Interviews in the past and there was definitely certain problematic, uh, moments that I've, I've witnessed when it comes to interviewing. So that's why I, my interest is to make sure that this process is as fair, equal, uh, inclusive as possible. Um, so from what I've been able to tally, um, there would be. In addition to those three questions, uh, that, um, that Madam Clerk was, uh, uh, pr- presented. Uh, that we would each have a question. Um, let's say if that were the case, they, if, if we would each have a question. So that's, um. And I would highly recommend, uh, that the questions be limited to two minutes. So that, uh, so applicants feel what it's like for public comments where you only have two mi- two minutes. Um, uh, and so, um, so let's say if it was two minutes each. Uh, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six questions in total. Um.
Where are you getting six questions?
Yeah, it'd be seven questions. And so it'll be seven questions.
Member Pryforce, just to be clear, so that we can make sure we understand what you're saying. What we're proposing is four standard questions. The, the clerk provided three examples. The discussion is, would we like to have three or four questions total that are standard questions that are agreed upon tonight? That will be put out in the public view. The option remains at the end for each member to ask what's called a follow-up question. It is not your own new independent question. It's, the example would be if I was the applicant and the question was, why are you interested in city council? And I say, um, I'm interested in being on the city council because I have a long history of experience working with people who are unhoused. And in my experience working with people and who are unhoused, I, um, I did advocacy for them. Um, in front of, in front of the court and in front of, in front of, uh, political and governmental bodies. Right? And they keep answering the question. And you, you hear something that you want to know more about, but they had only two minutes to answer the question, right? So when you get to the follow-ups, each of us has a chance to ask for them to further expound on or explain. Something that we heard that we want to give them an additional minute for. It's not to create a whole new question because that would be an unfair process to ask. Targeted questions to people. It's designed to be the follow-up, like you mentioned this, could you please? Give, uh, further explanation about that, right? Like, that's really what it's designed to do, is to just afford the, the applicant the chance to. Have a chance to say more because what we don't want to do is lock them into two minutes. And then you want a little piece of information that you didn't really get clarity on, or maybe you don't know if you understand what they answered with. And you want to just get, you, you, or you think that we don't maybe understand what they're saying because maybe you know what their answer was and you want to. Hey, could you, could you talk a little more about that? It's really, that's really what that is about. So it's four questions that we're gonna all agree upon tonight that are the standard questions. And then that follow-up space is really just not a new sets of questions that we're inventing. It's what's happening live in the meeting that we're following up on. We may not even have a follow-up question. It may not be a need to do it, but we've preserved. Time for ourselves so that each member could do a follow-up question if they wanted. So it is four, four questions with the possibility of each of the four of us asking up to one, one-minute follow-up question.
Okay, so then we're fa- so, uh, I mean, that's what I'm trying to clarify. So then we are limiting ourselves to one minute in terms of, uh, follow-up questions, right? And so, uh, so right now we've seen three questions. Um, and so, uh, so I'm just, I'm just calculating it. So it's two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Uh, uh, and then if we include an introduction, then that's thirteen minutes. Um, uh, per applicant. Uh, and that's, uh, thirteen minutes, and that's just, uh, in terms of, uh, questions and not anything else, uh, that, uh, that you share. So my, uh, recommendation is that, uh, if we want to, let's say, keep it below fifteen minutes. Uh, that we stick with, uh, just those, those three questions. Maybe even limited to two questions in terms of question quality. Um, some of the, some of the questions are a little too similar and so, uh, we can maybe, uh, cut it down to about two questions. Uh, so two standard questions, two minutes each of response. And then we all have one minute, uh, to, to provide a follow-up question. Um, and then, uh, and then we have, uh, a three-minute, um, and, and then, uh, and of course the applicant. Uh, provides a, a three-minute, uh, uh, introduction. So if we do it that way, that's, that's four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. So that's, then we, then we, yeah, then we, yeah, we've cut it down to about eleven minutes. Yeah.
Yeah, so I would personally, uh, I would rather give them three questions. I don't want to do an interview based on two questions. That doesn't tell me anything about the person. And so if you're trying to have a fair process that's gonna be. You know, if I only get to judge somebody based on two questions, you're back at, I'm judging them on their paper application mostly. Because I've only heard two things. So, um, I, I would prefer that we have three or four baseline questions. So that we can actually ask them about the things that are both on here. If we want to use these example questions that were provided, we can. If we want to. Uh, tweak them or change them, we can also do that. But I would not go down to two baseline questions because it's not gonna. It's gonna be impossible to pick the only two things you want to know about somebody.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so then we're back to then thirteen minutes. I have a, a, a clarifying question around. Um, the kind of information that was, uh, available, so a follow-up to Councilmember, uh, Welch's question. Um, so, uh, so, so either, uh, Mayor Bowders or, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, if you can answer. Will the interview, uh, the written, uh, portion of, of their answers be available? Prior to the in, the, uh, the interview, to the public, so that the public can examine it.
Yes, so the clerk will, uh, she will clarify if I'm wrong, but. What will happen is the, um, applications that they submit will be published as part of the agenda packet. They will be redacted by the clerk and the city attorney to remove personally identifiable interva- inter- information like their home address. And their phone number, because we don't publish that information on a, on a, on a, on agenda item, but their answers and the questions they provided to those. The, the questions themselves that are not personally identifiable will be all on the agenda packet. Okay, is that right, April?
That's correct, Mayor. The only other, um, information they were allowed to upload a resume. So we will redact the personal information out of that and provide that along with the, uh, application.
Yep, so. Yep, Member Mora?
Uh, I was just hoping we could maybe, uh, by a show of hands, see who's in agreement that the four-minute intro. Plus the two minutes per. plus the two minutes per question times a question per uh council member, that's eight, plus the four minutes uh with the follow-up question each with a minute response, that's sixteen-minute cap uh that I believe was proposed earlier.
Yeah.
By a show of hands, who thinks that's a good idea?
Okay, well, I appreciate your request to do that, I will honor that through the chair, I will honor your request um to ask that. We'll do a straw poll, if the format of uh, we can do three or four minutes for an introduction, um, four standard questions that we would agree upon with two minutes each, and then four minutes allocated for follow-up questions with a maximum of each council member getting a a question that gets a one-minute response. By a show of hands, who's amenable to that being the process for the interview? Okay, Member Pride Force, you don't agree with that process, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't agree. I I I believe that your previous suggestion that it that the um the introduction be three minutes um, and that uh the follow-up questions be one minute. Um, and uh in terms of the core, sort of the core questions, the standard questions, outside of the follow-up questions, um, I am amenable to either it be it being two questions or being three questions.
Okay.
Um, so I think that, so I, I'm sorry, so that I think the difference is that uh with Councilmember Moore's proposal, the introduction was four minutes, and and I'm proposing that it be three minutes.
Okay, so I I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify and I'm gonna make a proposal, okay? The proposal is the applicant gets three minutes for a self-propelled introduction, okay? Then there will be four questions, two minutes each, okay, eight minutes total. Then there will be four minutes for follow-up questions, only if a member wants to ask one, not obligated to do that. If a member asks a follow-up question, they get one question and it gets not more than a one-minute response. Okay, so the maximum envelope of time is three minutes plus eight minutes plus four minutes. Okay, which is fifteen minutes. By a show of hands, who's amenable to that timeline and process? Okay, so we have three, three hands up, all right, we are going to move on now to questions. So let's go to the questions themselves, Member Mora?
Oh, sorry, I should bring my hand down.
Okay, so the here's are three, these are three, these are three example questions that were provided by the city clerk that could be used for the purposes of the interview. Um, we have just uh by a majority vote agreed to do four questions total, so there's the ability to add one question that we could agree upon. If we cannot reach a majority agreement on one additional question, we will only have three questions. Um, but are there any questions here? Let me just start with the first one. Why are you interested on serving in serving on the Emeryville City Council? By a show of hands, who agrees that's a question we should ask the applicants? Okay, there's a majority support, that question is included. Second question that's on this sheet here is, what are your ideas to encourage citizen engagement in the city of Emeryville? By a majority of hands, who agrees with that question? Okay, there's two votes. Um, the third one is, what unique experiences or strengths do you possess that can benefit you as a mem- that can benefit you as the member?
Yep, I saw that arrow there.
Yeah, um, what unique experiences or strengths can you do, do you possess that can benefit you? I, it's trying to ask what are, what is going to help you succeed in the job is what the question is aiming to do. Um, who, who likes the concept of the question but would want to reword it? How about that? Okay, there's agreement for that, so um, we we we're gonna move forward with question number one, let's go to question three. Is there a proposal for how to reword this question to get to the intent of it in a way that would be a little easier to read and understand? Member Welch?
Um, I think what the it was trying to say was, what unique experiences or strength do you possess that you feel you can bring to the city council?
Okay, does that, does that feel like a, okay, Member Mora?
Uh, yeah, that works, or just replace you with the city.
Yeah, benef- that can benefit.
The city.
Okay, so if the question was reworded, let's do a new show of hands, if the question was reworded to say, what unique experiences or strengths do you possess that will, that um that you can contribute, that you can contribute to the benefit of the city, who would agree with that question? Okay, so that's, uh, April, you're gonna have to listen to the tape, that is the question, okay? Um, sorry, I'm not gonna be able to write it as we go. Um, so that that question will go, I think that question should be the second question, right after what's your interest, the second is usually what are your experiences and strengths that are make you a good contributor. Um, okay, there was not a majority of support for the third, the the middle dot, so I will now entertain with hands raised uh a proposal for another question. Member Welch?
Um, I think asking about their previous um either volunteer or public service background.
Okay, um, do you think that can be answered in the question we just did, or would you ask it different? How would you distinguish it from the last question?
Well, when I think about unique experiences, I think about life experiences and strengths, things that if you've gone through specific challenges, um, you know, housing insecurity, for example, food insecurity, um, living with a disability, things like that, where you could, um, those personal lived experiences can have an impact on policy. That's what I think about when I think about unique experiences, it's not necessarily like your professional background or your civic uh, your, not civic, but your public service background, but like if you are on any boards and commissions previously, or if you, you know, oh, I've been president of my HOA, something like that, that has more around like your professional experience, and I know they're turning in a resume, but I think it's, you know, sometimes when you're interviewing, you're actually speaking, you get to actually get more into detail about how you could use some of those more professional experiences and apply it to council service.
So if the question was, that's really helpful, so if the question was, um, I think you might have said some of these words actually the first time around, and I'm understanding you a little bit better, so thank you for that. Um, if you're asking, uh, what professional skills, civic uh, civic or volunteer activities have you engaged in that best demonstrate your, or I don't want to say the best demonstrate, but maybe um that or just what are they, we could just say what are they, like, so so what, um, please, please describe your professional uh backgrounds, skill set, as well as any civic or volunteer um activities that you're engaged in, so we kind of learn about them.
Because it's not necessarily like your work history, but it's like, have you been like on a volunteer board or things like that? So, those are the kind of background information I would want to hear about from people.
Okay, Member Pride Force?
So the, in the interest of time, the 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 reason why I have an issue with that question is um, is responses, um, uh, because I, you know, do this all the time, of, of, as I stated earlier, right? And then it has them repeat uh something that is in their memo, I mean, in their resume or um in in the three-minute uh introduction, so I think that that's the best, a better question for a one-minute, um, uh, for the one-minute follow-up uh response, um, because it's a one-minute, it's a one-minute response.
And do you have a question you're proposing instead?
No, no, actually, I think, I think these questions are fine, I think we could actually cut it down to four, I mean, uh, to to three of these core questions, um, since their portfolio is going to be made available to the public, uh, their resume, all that, those sort of things, I think the one-minute follow-up questions are good for us to be able to sort of fill in the gaps for the applicant.
Okay, do do you others agree with that? And or have another, we we've set time aside to have up to four questions in the way we plan this, so is there anybody who wishes to add a question, or would you like to move forward with all three, Member Mora?
Um, I I was thinking maybe something along the lines of, uh, this is something people are asked as candidates when they run, but what are your top three priorities for the city? Um, you know, maybe they speak to that a little bit in the intro, but I think, uh, you could say that for any of these questions. Um, do people think that might be a good idea?
That was my idea, I was sitting on, waiting to see if others had any others first, but that's exactly what I would be asking is um, please state your, please, you know, identify and articulate what you think the top three, your top three priority objectives would be for the city. How do folks feel about, by a show of hands, are people okay with that being one of the questions? A majority of hands, okay, so that that'll be a question, so we'll go back to the second question, which I did not vote for, and I know someone else didn't, because it didn't have three votes. Um, what are your ideas to encourage citizen engagement in the city of Emeryville? Is is there general receptivity then to um having that be a question? We'll do a show of hands again, you're you're a no, Kalima, would you like to explain why?
Um, it may need a a more of a, I think, because they have two minutes to respond, it 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 sounds like it might be a longer question, uh, a response. Um, but um, yeah, it I don't think it's, it's, I just don't think it's a a very strong uh a question. Um, um, like, what would, in terms of interviewing, I would like to know, um, uh, so what are some ways that you have encouraged citizen engagement? As a resident, as a city of Emeryville, as opposed to what are your ideas? Ideas can just go in a lot of directions. And so your question, the fourth question is a much stronger question, and I would rather replace it with with that, with with this one.
Okay, so we we've all agreed on the first question, the third question was um amended, and that's the second question, so we're going from your interest to your unique experiences or strengths, speaking a little more um to personal contribution. And I think we're gonna go to the third question, it's gonna be, what are your um top three pi- policy goals or objectives that you'd like to contribute to the city? So how do you bridge from who you are to what you want to do? So if we dump this question, I agree with the ideas thing being very vague, that's why I didn't vote for it the first time either, I thought it was, it's too amorphous and it just lets people say whatever mushy stuff they want to say, so I agree with that. Um, so could there be a final wrap-up question after people have explained what their priorities are? Um, you know, that uh, that that we that we want to identify um from applicants when we're doing these interviews? I can't tell Member Pride Force if your hand is just still up and, or if it's um, if, okay. Um, so after, after kind of hearing what their their priorities are, um, what I would like to do actually, because we've reserved those four minutes for the the follow-up questions, I think we could do this, I think we could do we could go the two minutes, two minutes, two minutes for those three questions. I think we could then have the four one-minute follow-up questions. And then I think instead of a fourth question, we can just give them two minutes to say whatever they want at the end, after they've had the chance to answer the questions and the follow-up questions, we can give them two minutes to give a closing statement to us about whatever they want, it's free-form. How do folks feel about that? Just leaving two minutes at the end, so that if they ran out of time in something and they just really want to get back to it, it's a, that's a, they can use that two minutes however they feel like they want to. How do folks feel? I'm I'm in favor of just giving people two minutes at the end. But, you're not in favor of that?
Yeah, I'm more for thirty seconds, thirty-second uh close.
What if we agree to one minute, then, how about that?
Uh, sure, yeah. You'll just keep thinking, yeah, they'll keep thinking, yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, okay, one minute, one minute to close. Okay, so this is, uh, can we go to the next slide where the other item was? Okay, so I, we've determined the time limit by virtue of how we just decided this last item. So we will have a three-minute introduction, we will have three questions that are two minutes each, we've identified those, it's the why are you interested, it's tell us about your unique strengths and experiences and what you'll bring to the council and the city. And the third question will be about your top three priority interests or goals, so we have three minutes intro, we have six minutes for the form questions. We have a maximum of four minutes for the one-minute follow-ups, which gets us to ten minutes. And then we have a um one-minute opportunity to close, so we have, um, in the way we've handled it, we've reduced the time um, and we've, we've got a pretty streamlined process there, everybody seems to be in agreement with the hands we had on those items. So we've taken care of the second and third bullet, so we'll go back up to the first bullet. So now that we know this, and we know we're at like a twelve, let's assume it's twelve minutes per person max, right, with the the time that it takes. So with that understanding, um, do people, do people wish, I I have a question before I actually reintroduce this item to discussion. Um, April, I have a question for you, because I haven't seen and we haven't seen who who applied and whatnot. Um, and recognizing some people have applied and some people may apply after this meeting because there's seventy-two hours left. My question for you is, um, like, how much of an application are people filling out? Are they actually answering substantive questions, or is it just like in three, is it like the planning commission thing where in three hundred and fifty words or less, tell us why you're interested?
Um, I can tell you that three of the applicants have thoroughly answered the uh questions and uh one did not um supply answers to any of them.
Okay, I would like to, I would like to propose that we interview every applicant who offers an answer to every question. That is the standard I would like to offer. If you can't answer the questions, then you're not accountable to the public process. So we should not be interviewing people who do not answer all the questions. Um, and if so, if they haven't, it's considered an incomplete application, just like it would be if someone ran for council and didn't turn in something that was required, right? So I would like to propose that be the standard, so if if, to my earlier point, if Bozo the Clown does apply and says, answers all the questions, the reality is that we will spend twelve minutes with Bozo the Clown, and when we get to discussion, we can simply give our comments in less than the two minutes that will be allocated to each of us for observations. He likes red noses that make honk noises, and he would probably be fun at a party for people age five or under, like, that could be the comment, right? So, we could just handle the process that way, it's inclusive, it ensures that anyone who wants to apply can apply. Um, you know, I don't foresee us having twenty-five people apply and us being up all night doing this, so I I'm I'm not that concerned about it. Um, but I I would like us to agree on 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 this if we could, so we can move on from this. Member Mora?
Alternatively, within five minutes, once we see the written application, we could see if Bozo the Clown filled his page with nonsense and we could opt not to interview him.
It's it's clear, I've I've made it an example that's an obvious example, but in a less obvious example, right, I work in the criminal justice reform space, there's a lot of people who don't get interviews simply because of the spelling of their name. So my point is that I agree with Member Pride Force that if it's a gray area, if a person um writes reasons and they are perhaps not serious to you, but may not because of your personal or lived experience, but may seem serious to another person who reads it, how are we going to vet that adequately? Right, like, the, that's why I'm trying to stick with non-responsiveness as being, as being a standard, because I don't want um, I don't want to diminish a perspective that may not be um from a worldview that any of the four of us share. Right, that's that's where I'm coming from on that. Member Mora?
Uh, yeah, so I absolutely agree with that sentiment. If I had something in front of me where I I it looks like somebody's making a good faith effort to answer in whatever capacity they're doing, I would personally choose to interview them. Right, but I'm trying not to remove that choice from the council uh without sight unseen of what's coming, right?
Right, others, how do others feel? Vice Member?
No, that, and my original point, it was about just someone filling out the name, address and then submitting an application, but they didn't actually answer a question, or you can tell by not name, judging them on their name, but someone putting a name that was inappropriate and just a joke situation. That is something, I, it's like, we don't need to interview someone who's not taking it seriously, but stating that qualified is answering the questions and that we're not going into necessarily the content, if we agree or disagree about what they said, is that the, there was a good faith effort to actually fill out the application and turn it in on time, and there is some subs, there's some substance there.
Okay, members, uh, Member Mora?
Uh, just want to add, I I think this counts, I really think we are all on the same page. Uh, and I think we are all very capable of looking at an application and determining Uh, and I think we are all very capable of looking at an application and determining if that person is serious and, and being generous uh, in that regard. Uh, to uh, you know, air, like, I would err on the side of interviewing somebody if I was unsure, right? So I think we're, uh, we're really all on the same page there and I'm, I'm just advocating that we uh, at least have a chance to look at these besides, before we decide to interview everybody.
Well, there's, okay. We have to, we have to reach, do you have another comment, Vice Mayor Welch? Hands up. Okay. We have to, we have to bring finality to this at some point, so I'm going to propose a motion, okay? And if it doesn't, uh, if it doesn't succeed because people don't like it, then we will continue the debate. Um, I'm going to make a motion that we will conduct interviews of applicants to the city council position on February twenty-first. I'm going to uh, say that the direction to staff and the process for this motion will have the following components. Any person who is a duly uh, registered voter and meets the eligibility requirements under the government code, as the city clerk outlined at the beginning, to apply and is a resident of the city, um, who answers all the questions in the application that was uh, provided by the clerk in writing prior to the deadline that was set by the council at the prior council meeting will be eligible for an in-person interview on February twenty-first. Um, that interview will consist of the following components. It will be a random draw as to the order of applicants to appear before the council. They will get three minutes timed to provide a opening statement about themselves. They will have three questions. The first question will be speaking to their interest in running for city council. The second question will be speaking to their lived experience and other uh, personal and unique uh, skills and experience that they bring to council. And the third would speak to their top three policy goals or interests as a policy matter if they were a council member. There will be those three questions. They will get two minutes each to answer those questions. At the end of those questions, there will be a four-minute period for a maximum of one question per council member for a period of one-minute response each, which is optional for the council member to ask a follow-up question based on the response an applicant provided to the three questions. After which, we will offer a one-minute closing statement to each applicant. We will complete the process of interviewing all of those applicants. In that process, we will then hold public comment. The public comment will conclude. We will have discussion to talk. Each member will give remarks briefly in respect to each applicant. After which, we've completed that process, we will have a discussion and debate as to the potential appointment to the city council. That is my motion to appro, to uh, approve that process with that direction. Are there clarifying questions on my motion?
No, but I'd like to second.
Hey, there's a motion by Mayor Bowers and a second by Vice Mayor Welch to do the direction and process just outlined for the record.
Can I propose a substitute motion?
You can.
Can I take the motion that you made and uh, apply a uh, brief screening process where the uh, council will select uh, and a majority will select who gets interviewed?
Make that motion. So you're making a substitute motion to essentially the same motion I've made and you've included a process to require the council to screen and sh, select applicants for interview prior to the interview process. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second to Mr. Moore's motion?
A second.
Okay, so the substitute motion takes priority. So Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll the clarification for all the members? It would be the motion I made, but the additional uh, component being that there will be council discussion and um, just to be clear, member Moore, so we don't have this fight after the, after the fact. You want to clarify in your motion here how we're going to select? Is it, are you simply saying a majority vote as to which people to interview?
Each, each council member will just say, I would like to interview this number of peop, the following names of people. And if whichever names have a majority, those people get interviewed.
But, but, okay, what does that mean? What does a majority mean? You're saying a majority of, of three out of the four?
Majority of, majority of council, yes.
Okay, that's the clarification we need. So anybody who gets a majority of that. So there's discussion on the substitute motion, member Pryforce?
Yeah, I just, uh, I probably believe this will be the first time that I would vote nay, but um, I just don't disagree with the substitute motion. I think it has some serious, um, there's some serious issues with it, um, that um, just are not aligning with my values. The person, the applicant is a resident of Emeryville. And as a resident of Emeryville, I don't believe that their ability to be interviewed should be determined by um, by, by a majority. It's just, it, 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 it sounds, it, it just doesn't sound right. So let's, let's, let's all go back in time, right? I mean, I'm sure there was a time when Emeryville's council um, may not have been the most inclusive uh, Emery, uh, in council. And so using that rule, um, if say, if a, 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 a black person or a queer person or a, a, a woman uh, decide that they wanted to run and then the majority said, well, we're not even going to interview them because we don't like um, you know, their identity, you know, it, it just has um, implications that I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't support. Um, especially when I think about like Department Labor rules and, and I know this is not subject to those rules, but um, it's, it's something that as a CEO, it, 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 it bothers me to my core. Sorry.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Okay, I'm lost. I thought we were just looking over to make sure that it was the qualified piece and we define qualified by like they actually did the application.
No, member Moore's motion, as I understand it, is to actually require us to preliminarily vote and three of the four of us have to agree to interview the person. We will have done a re, a reading screen of the applicant and if you, if, if two of us, uh, if, if two of us do not like a person's uh, application, then they would not get an interview.
But I thought we, we went over that and we said we weren't going to.
He is, he's, he, that's why he made a substitute motion because he is proposing something different. You've seconded the motion. Do you wish to, do you wish to withdraw your second to the motion?
No, we can vote on it.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify.
Wait, hold on. As a member of process, please always wait to be recognized, everybody, so we can have no problems in the future. Member Moore, you're recognized.
So uh, just to clarify, I, as I've said earlier, uh, you know, I would opt to interview just about anybody in front of us, but uh, I trust the judgment of this council to look at an application and determine uh, whether or not that's a serious candidate. And the criteria should not just be uh, whether a question field has been populated, which, with what may be, I don't know, gibberish, because we're saying if it is gibberish, then that person would then get to make a mockery of the council for their allotted time. Uh, so I, I, I see this as not a uh, uh, some grave threat against um, you know, representation. It's simply uh, us looking at the applications and saying like, saying, yes, this, these, these, these folks look good. Put them through, or hey, this one person doesn't look serious to us, uh, you know, that we could probably get through that process in five to ten minutes. I, I, I think we're, I, I'm not trying to make too big of a deal out of this. Question?
Okay, can we take the shirt? That's okay. Can we take the shirt screen down, please? Member Pryforce, thank you.
So I, I understand where uh, uh, well, council member, sorry, council member Moore is coming from, and I, and I do believe that he's coming from a really good place. I think that what it is, is that sometimes these Bozo the Clowns, this is where my perspective is, it's a trap, right? It's, it's like their way of being able to say that our council isn't democratic or our council isn't this, you know, and that sort of thing. And we walk right into the trap when we change our, our rules or procedures in order to anticipate the, you know, the worst uh, citizen as opposed to being able to go, you know what, let's just do it as democratically as possible so we cover all bases. And yeah, it may be fourteen minutes of a, of a, of a giant rant, right? Um, and I, I totally understand that. Um, at the same time, I also want to be careful um, with how we, how we, how, how we move forward because those same um, rules and procedures can be used to penalize other people. Historically, been penalized uh, other people and uh, be, based upon other things. They weren't Bozo the Clown, they were just, you know, um, the, the, the community activist or this person, um, or, you know, of, of identity that doesn't agree with the, the council. And then that's, that's what I'm most concerned about. And so, uh, you know, I, I know you're coming from a good place. I know you're not out to discriminate or what I, or the metaphor that I, I use, the analogy I used earlier. Uh, it's just that, you know, for me, I, I think about like, what is the most democratic path uh, moving forward? And also just to protect us.
Thank you. Member, Vice Mayor Welch, do you have more comments?
I just wanted to, I thank you, member Moore, for actually clarifying your point because the point is we do have the option just to include everyone by majority vote. So it is not actually us potentially excluding anybody. So thank you for clarifying that. I was, um, I had misunderstood your original point, so thank you.
Okay, is there further discussion? The substitute motion is the, the temporal and interview questions process, but it includes uh, basically a preliminary review of the paper applications at the meeting prior to interviews to get council majority agreement as to which applicants to interview. There's already the, in the motion is already included, if they don't complete the paper application, then they're not eligible. Okay, any further discussion or debate on that motion? If not, April, would you please call the roll?
Yes, for the substitute motion, council member Mora?
Aye.
Council member Pryforce?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
No, the motion fails. So now the original motion is heard, which does not include the screening of applicants by a majority vote. Please call the roll.
Council member Mora?
Aye.
Council member Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, thank you, members, for working through that and we have given staff the direction necessary to complete our process at the next meeting. We will now turn to item twelve point four, which is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville, making the required findings for AB three sixty-one. There's no presentation on this item. We will now call for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on the AB three sixty-one resolution have two minutes to do so. April, did we receive any written comment cards for this item?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, last call for public comment. Please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
Yeah, the, the uh, city of Emeryville has still not fixed the IT problem whereby people that attend these meetings, these Zoom meetings via computer are required to give, to divulge their uh, personal identity versus, I guess, from what I understand, uh, if you go, if you go via telephone, you can be anonymous. You can ask questions anonymously or participate anonymously as the Brown Act provides. But, but the, the problem is those that, that attend these meetings via com, computer, not, not a um, not via telephone. So the city needs to fix this. It's a, it's a Brown Act violation. We are allowed to uh, attend these meetings and uh, and be anonymous. So can you, I would like to have the city direct the IT person to correct that problem, so that we are in compliance with the Brown Act.
Are there any further comments on the AB three sixty-one resolution? Okay, seeing none. Public comment is now closed. Members, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion on this.
I move approval.
I second.
Thank you. There's a motion from Vice Mayor Welch, seconded by member Moore, to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Council member Mora?
Aye.
Council member Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, thank you. The resolution is approved. We'll move to item thirteen, which is department head reports. Do we have, uh, there's, uh, Mr. Bryant? Can we promote him to speaking and receive the planning director's report? Good evening, Mr. Bryant.
Good evening, Mayor Bowers and members of the city council. This is my regular monthly report to you on the most recent planning commission meeting, which occurred on January twenty-sixth. Uh, there were three items on their agenda, as are listed here on your agenda. The first item was a request for a two-year extension of planning permits for a twenty-four unit residential building on Sixty-Fifth Street that was approved by the commission in December of twenty-twenty-one. The commission unanimously approved this two-year extension, so it will now expire if a building permit is not applied for on December ninth, twenty-twenty-four. I will note that this item is appealable to the city council. Uh, the next item was a study session on the capital improvement program. The commission um, received essentially a similar presentation to what the council uh, got back in October. Uh, the commission appreciated the presentation. They did ask for additional detail and indicated that they supported additional uh, public open space and park projects and sustainable transportation projects. Finally, a study session on the proposed fifty-four unit residential project at Nine Anchor Drive was listed on the agenda. However, that study session was not held because the applicant indicated that they were withdrawing the application uh, prior to the planning commission meeting. As I said, the first item, the residential project on Sixty-Fifth Street, is appealable to the city council. The appeal deadline for that is this coming Friday, uh, February tenth. And of course, if the commission, if the council wishes to appeal that item to yourselves, this would be your opportunity to do so. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Mr. Bryant about the planning director's report? Members, as was noted, there's an opportunity today. There's a fifteen-day window after the planning commission decides anything that's final and appealable to the city council. City council gets one opportunity to appeal it to itself. Is there any reason why a member here wishes to ask that the council appeal the item before that's been decided by the planning commission? Okay, seeing none, there are no appeals tonight. And that will take us to item fourteen, which is future agenda item requests from members. Are there members who wish to request a future agenda item for discussion? Okay, I have one item, which is I just would like with um, if the majority would be support, is uh, the anniversary of the invasion of uh, the Ukraine is approaching and it was requested of us that uh, we consider a proclamation standing in solidarity with the people of Ukraine. Is there any objection to me putting a proclamation, a non-binding statement of our support on the next agenda? Okay, I see no opposition, so we will do a proclamation recognizing um, the people in the Ukraine. Okay, with that, oh, member Pryforce?
Is it possible to add, I think, uh, Mayor, is it possible to add Syria and Turkey um, as well, grouped up, or do we do a separate one?
We would do something separate because they're different types of issues, but I'd be more than happy to um, have something that recognizes uh, the victims of the disasters in Syria and Turkey, yes. And if you, by the way, if you have a draft of something that you know that's been done, a pro, that's a proclamation format, you can send that to myself and April and we'll put that together for the council meeting. Member Welch?
Yes, um, a discussion around a potential ordinance to allow tenants to um, submit a request for their own bulk pickup.
Okay, is there a majority support to have a future agenda item to allow tenants to request their own bulk pickup? By show of physical hands, please let me know if you support the request. Okay, there's a majority support, so there is direction given to the staff to, at a future council meeting. Member Welch, is your request to, um, I, I'm assuming that we would first have a study session of the issue to determine the parameters of an ordinance. Is that sufficient for you?
Yes, that would be fine, Mayor.
Okay, so this is a study session request to determine council's interest in drafting and scoping in ordinance and that will go to probably, Mr. Bryant, your hand is up. Is that because you wish to talk on that for some reason? Nope, okay, that's fine. All right, so we have that. Uh, member Pryforce, your hand is still up. Did you have an item still?
Oh, uh, yes, um, I would like to discuss, um, uh, uh, I guess it'll be a study session to see um, is it, uh, if, if an ordinance may, uh, similar to other cities that would allow, uh, that would require property managers to have um, a full-time staff person based upon how many units um, are in their property.
Okay, so now there's a request to have a study session on that. Can I, uh, let me just see for the, the, the request that's been made. Is there a show of hands or people willing to have a study session to discuss the item about full-time property management on staff? Okay, there's a majority of hands. So what I'd like to ask is, since they're actually related, um, members, would you be acceptable to have a study session that actually just includes a discussion of both items? And we can then have a more complete conversation about that issue, about, about that? Is that fine or do you wish them to be separate? Member Pryforce?
I'll, I'll leave that to uh, Councilman Welsh, but I have no problem with them being together.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, member Mora?
I'm wondering if they might inherently be separate, um, because one is kind of a, is that like a, kind of like a I'm wondering if they might inherently be separate, um, because one is kind of a, is that like a kind of like a tenant's rights issue? And the other one might be a multifamily housing issue, because condo folks, like, I don't get a bulk pick pickup either. It's one for the address.
I I understand. I think this is more of a staffing item. Um, so this is, this is going to fall within the Chad and Valerie um, and Charlie kind of world is what I'm imagining, and so why don't we do this? Why don't we give staff the flexibility of bringing us a study session that has potentially two items in it? We could hear them both. It'll, the study sessions don't come back in the next couple of meetings. This will take a couple of months for staff to prepare and do everything. But if they're able to produce them at one time, and we can just have a study session on those items together, they may be different, you're right, different actionable items in the end. Um, there may be different direction given, that's fine, but um, the goal being that it's easier for the public to follow single meetings where multiple issues are, as opposed to ask them to come to a series of meetings that may be of interest to them. So um, I'm I'm seeing thumbs up that people are okay with giving the staff the flexibility, but we're, we're looking to let them tell us if it makes more sense, because if one of them takes a long time and they have the other one ready in a month, and we should just do the one that they have ready, right? Okay, so there is agreement on that. Anything else? Okay, members, well, we are at the end of the meeting. Um, I would like to adjourn today's meeting in honor and memory of Tyree Nichols and every other um, person of color who has um, lost their life at the hands of a law enforcement officer in the United States. So with that understanding, members, the time is ten o seven PM, and we're adjourning this meeting in his memory. Thank you.